Alan Anderson, I'm the administrator for the Walsh County office.
Jason Johnston, Walsh County, vice president in charge of buildings and grounds.
Brad Nelson, I'm the Walsh County manager and supervisor.
Then Wolter, Cavalier, Department.
Bruce Smith, Cavalier, Department.
Dave Gauder, Cavalier, Department.
David Sikes, Cavalier, Department.
Chief Lieutenant, Sheriff, Sheriff.
Larry Young, Sheriff, Police Division.
Hunter, Mr. Walsh County Sheriff.
Adam Schreger.
Steve Perkins, Walsh County.
Kristi Britton, Walsh County.
Amy Zuda, Walsh County.
I'm Julia, I'm the HR advisor and recently just serving as the Chair of the jail.
Purpose of the meeting, as you all know, is to celebrate the goal of highlighting what we're dealing with.
Well, uh, to everyone, we appreciate, uh, being here today. Learned a little bit about your project, um, spoke with Sheriff Perkins a little bit on the phone and then had opportunity to speak with Tanya further on kind of where you're at in your process. Um, it sounds like so far you're doing a lot of, of good things. You already have committee, uh, together. You know, there's a need, um, you've already worked some facilities and have some ideas, but there's still a lot of questions. Uh, this is a, a, a big process. It can be very overwhelming, especially if you're building a regional type of facility. Um, so hopefully the goal today is, um, we're just going to tell you a little bit about ourselves, um, and then what your next step probably is. And then we want to make sure there's plenty of time to answer to just learn a little bit more about your, what you're thinking and answer questions because I know when we've at least talked, um, there's lots of questions. So hopefully you can, when you leave here today, you'll kind of have understanding what your next step is, uh, moving forward. Does that sound good?
Yes.
Um, my name is Jennifer Gernt. I'm Vice President of Sales and Marketing at the Samuels Group. We're a construction, um, firm.
Name's Sid Samuels. I'm the President of the Samuels Group, but also specialize really in pre-construction and uh, during the design phase and working with the architects and helping owners get to that point where we can actually start the construction.
I'm Scott Fettig, the owner of Climate Cart, The Architects. We specialize in detention facilities. We've done several around the state here. Uh, we're based in Minnesota.
So we'll just start out, um, I'm just going to give you just a quick overview of the Samuels Group. Like I said, we're, um, we specialize in construction, but we start very early in the training process. And we're going to talk about why, um, and what that makes you, we, we talked about the study, but we specialize in government and justice centers. In-house, we have pre-construction services, estimating services. We do construction management, general contracting, we do self-perform some of our work. But specific to projects like this, we do, uh, community outreach. Um, some of the states we work with, they have to pass a, a bond referendum. Um, and some just want to educate the community. Um, we have a strength in that. Um, I know I said late, so we'll show you later what that can kind of look like, but um, it's all, it's always important to educate the taxidermist or your community, you know, the needs and what you're doing. Um, we also have a commercial furniture division. Um, that also becomes very helpful when you're doing estimates as far as you're looking at the whole project. Um, furniture is something that's an afterthought, but, um, we can look at that and also give you estimates of what that's, what that looks like. And all these, for us, all these services are in-house. Like I said, we specialize in, um, we do healthcare, commercial, um, but we specialize in jail construction. That's, that's what we're passionate about. That's what we do. Um, we have 14 active county jail projects in various stages as we speak. Um, and we've done, um, for the last 20 years, over $500 million worth of, of work in the WOCS state. So this is, uh, this is what we do. And, um, both of our teams, uh, as you'll see, as Scott speaks, um, you know, we work, we come from the construction side of things, looking at, you know, the cost of estimate, phasing, the material, all that type of stuff. Where Scott will kind of explain his role, the architecture from, we have two different roles, but you need both your experts at the table and be both in this process. Um, and this just kind of shows you some of the, um, county clients that we work with. So I'm going to pass it off to Scott.
So I mentioned, uh, Climate Cart, The Architects specializes in public sector work. So we do a lot of county work, um, and quite a bit of state work. We really don't mess around with schools and other project types. So we focus on, uh, facilities for counties. Um, so we've done several different jails across the state, uh, government services, sheriff's office, dispatch stations. So that's more of our specialty. Um, we're a smaller, more niche firm. Um, I grew up in Bismarck, so, um, I'm very familiar with North Dakota, even though, uh, I'm based in Minnesota right now. Um, we do everything from planning studies all the way through construction, uh, with design work. So we want to talk a little bit today about studies and pre-designs, maybe where you're at in the process and give you some, a little bit of a helping hand, maybe to answer your questions and see where you, where are you at right now, gauge your, get that gauged, and then where you can go from here and maybe some of your next steps. So that's really, um, I'm along as a resource, just to give you some of those ideas. Um, we do full architecture and design. We're only architects and planners. Um, we hire out all the engineering services so that we can get, um, specialty engineers for, uh, whatever project type that we're doing. The Climate Cart, the experience we've got, uh, currently we've got 14 projects ongoing. Um, you see the list there, that's just our North Dakota work, um, that I put up there. Right now, we're working at CAS. Um, we're going to issue 96 cell job there, um, in March. Uh, that goes out to bid. We've done their intake expansion. Uh, the closest area, uh, closest ones to you, we did the jail facility over in Rawlette a few years ago, the jail and sheriff's office, and then also one that I know you've toured several times down in Barnes County. Um, we did their dispatch and jail. So I think the numbers that I'm hearing are probably in kind of in that ballpark, Mont Trail County. We did their, uh, sheriff's office and jail. That was in that 40-bed, um, 40-bed area also, so that when you go to indirect supervision, you're really looking at staffing, uh, in that every 40, so kind of a one to 40 ratio. So getting a few more beds, they're going to be classified, get you down to that 40 that you're actually using. So, um, we've done several of that size. The, where you're at in the process, you've set up some committees. So you're probably, I know we've been talking with Jason and with the sheriff about where you're at in the process, doing an RFQ, um, getting somebody to come onboard for a study. Um, so that's really, um, the orange bubble all the way to the left, but just to give you an idea that you go from a study, then you hit the three phases of design when you actually know what size you want, where you want it, and you start doing all that. You move into the green dot for schematic design, design development, construction documents, and then you start going in construction. So it's very common to start the process with a study or what you'll hear as a pre-design. So that usually, when it starts out is, why do you need a jail? Usually you're trying to educate the public with that. So you can certainly, you may have already started contacting the newspaper. Maybe you've taken them through your jail, you've taken the commissioners through the facility. So you really start with, okay, what's going on? It's not just, um, a, a bad inspection report, maybe. It might be things, uh, with your plumbing, it's things that are going to be very difficult to solve in an existing facility. And because they are used 24/7, they wear down faster than a normal office building that's only used eight or nine hours a day. So really you start kind of with that beginning questions, where you're at now is, okay, why do I need a jail? Um, what size do I need that jail to be? If you're looking at regional, are you designing for Walsh County and renting beds that you have available until you need them, maybe 10, 15 years from now? Or are you going in as a joint powers board or looking at financial investments from everybody? So we can certainly, um, I've been involved in a regional, uh, before, so we can answer some questions on that. So you're really trying to figure out that facility ownership, who's managing it? Who's renting beds? Are they guaranteed? How does, how do those finances work? Um, and then really developing those, those solutions. Where is it going to be located? Um, we got all the sizes, is it connected to courts, those kinds of things? So you start doing some concept plans and then really start looking at the budget piece. Um, you can get some of the budgeting from the initial square foot projections. If you say, well, not every, uh, if you tour through, uh, Barnes, Rawlette, and Mont Trail, they're all three right around that 40 to 47 beds, but they're all different sizes. Cause everybody is running it a little differently with, with their programs and things that they want to do. So there isn't a standard design that you just pull out of the drawer and this is what works for you at 40 beds. It really is still customized to you. So those are all the things you're looking at. And of course, depending on your location, transporting to courts, other counties transporting here, really want to still factor in some of those operational costs. What does it cost to transport from across a parking lot, across town versus connecting physically to the jail? And factor those things in too, because the bricks and mortar are one thing, but you start getting into those operational costs and that can be over 20 years. It could be 90% of your facility outlet. So it's an important number to really focus on that staffing. And then I think we talked about funding, um, how you want to fund it. I don't know how far you've gotten on that. I know, uh, at Rawlette, they looked at, um, a lease purchase agreement. Um, and I talked to that company, they're based out of Colorado. So, um, that's how Rawlette did theirs as a lease purchase. Um, so certainly there's different ways, uh, depending on what you're looking at or what's available or what's still currently allowed. Um, and then, um, Jennifer mentioned it, the public outreach part of it. Um, getting the public educated, maybe putting some links on your website so that they're starting to see that process going real time, so that when you really are talking about it, they're not blindsided by, by what is that need, where are we going, what's the cost, and start getting into how it affects them. So this is just really, um, a process that we've followed, we've followed, uh, whether you've got any project type. So you're really starting, um, you really want to focus on the first 90 days of it, but just getting that, what are your needs, getting that space program, which is really a list of every space that you have in the facility, the size of it, the quantity of that. And then that square footage starts to tell the estimator, okay, well, this is running at a cost of square foot for this. Again, your layout of it will make a difference too in the location, but that'll start to at least get you some ballpark ideas. Uh, I know we sent some stuff up to Jason and the sheriff. Um, they probably circulated around just taking what Barnes County bid at and then escalating that to today's dollars, just to again, get you in that ballpark. Doesn't mean with a different construction delivery method that it won't be, um, a different cost or how that works. So, so this really is just a little bit of a timeline of how you kind of kick it off. The first part of it up to the, the yellow star is really that programming. And then you're really starting to take, now you know what you're going to do. Then you start figuring out the location and start doing those block diagrams and figuring out the layout. So you can start to take a look at, uh, what the staffing is, work with the OCR. So they can start getting onboard too, so that, uh, you know, sometimes you can save a position by moving the laundry closer to food service or something like that. So certainly you want to start testing those. And then that's what'll get you that, that number. If you're going for a referendum, you're going for bonding, however you're going to fund it, that's, then you can put a, a good definitive cost to those, uh, to those solutions.
Um, the next.
Absolutely. You know what? I think that's the, oh, you got that? Yeah, absolutely.
If you did, Mark, tell me approximately what was from like here to the end, a couple of years, two and a half years?
Um, the study part of it can take anywhere from four to six months, depending on, um, how you've got it set up. Um, they weren't doing anything regional, so they knew what their needs were. Um, they had toured, uh, Rawlette and Mont Trail and they liked what Mont Trail was doing a little better. Um, Rawlette had more dormitory beds, uh, they wanted to stay away from that. So, so I would say for, for the process, yeah, you're probably looking at three, four, five months, I think. Um, six months at the top end of that. And then depending on what you're doing for public education and those kinds of things, putting your financing in place. Uh, design-wise for your size facility is probably six to eight months of design, and then you're probably looking at anywhere from
three and a half to
18 months to 24 months for construction. So, you know, when you start looking at that and you say, wow, we're not going to be in a facility for four years. It's, it's out there a little ways.
Did the reservation participate in Rawlette or did it go elsewhere?
Reservation did not, you know, and they struggled up there just with, uh, um, who to bring to the design meetings. Um, the sheriff was active there, but as soon as that facility was opening, um, he was, uh, he, he left. Um, and then they got a different sheriff. They went through some jail administrator and communication people. They were shut down for a while, um, by not following their operations procedures. So, yeah, they had a, they had a bit of a mess over there.
But we just had two, uh, two more quick slides before really we wanted to open it up and really talk about your project and how it relates to the study. But we just wanted to show you the, um, communication outreach piece of it as well, whether you need to do this or not. Um, but there's a lot, um, for this particular county, um, they had to pass a bond requirement. So we created a website, um, basically it really educates the community on factual information about the need, um, the solution, tax impact, everything that they, uh, they are, have questions about. We had a Facebook, um, page as well, where you have, um, ongoing interaction, um, between the community, um, and the, and the project team members, which is very helpful because they will post questions and then when you go to community meetings, we can make sure we're always addressing the things that commonly come up, um, with, with your community. So this is just a quick example, one of them. This is a campaign we did, we did, they just wanted to educate the community on what they were doing. So two, two different approaches, but essentially you have the same information, right? Because they, everyone just wants to understand what is going on and how it's going to impact them. And what are, uh, what, what was the true need and what are the solutions that were considered? So. Um, now we just wanted to make sure that we, I know we only have an hour, but we wanted to make sure we had plenty of time to answer some of the questions or at least get a, a, a understanding of where you're at as far as. I know, um, the thought for the region of, um, jail, according to like our conversation or my conversation with Tanya, is you're, will be in Walsh County, um, and you're looking at, um, a potential five other counties participating in this. So, um, that's essentially kind of the information that we have at this point. So I just want to make sure we have plenty of time to talk about what kind of questions you have for us.
Can I ask you a quick question? So Cavaliers here, um, how many beds do you guys have right now? You have zero? Where are you transporting to?
All over.
What's your, what's your average daily population just roughly?
I think we have 600 days total last year.
Okay. And Trail is here. You guys have five, six, seven beds?
Thirteen. We have a hell of a presence, pretty holy.
Okay. And which other counties were expressing any interest?
Pembina.
Pembina? How big are they?
They have the same size as we do, a 16-bed jail right now.
Okay.
Their average probably about 10 each.
Okay.
And, you know, County. And potentially Nelson County.
Okay.
By now, none of them are holding females, correct?
Correct.
So due to, you know, regulations, COCR regulation, everybody's transporting, transporting their females, so.
Okay. So, so not everyone is really looking at a replacement to get rid of your jail? You're probably more looking at female beds? Or are you looking at potentially not, just closing your jail down and bringing them to one regional? That's the, okay.
Cavalier, Trail, and all those.
Okay.
Nelson County is going to, you know.
And is Pembina County close to being shut down or what?
Oh, Tom, do you want to touch that?
Uh, yeah. We, we, people in that, we try to be good because I think it's hard for them elsewhere. But the question was, what's going on in Pembina County? Are they opposed to being shut up? I think, I think they have experiences, um, I can't answer that yet. Um, specifically, but I think that they have some similar concerns that their jail may not have a lot of years left. So I don't know if they've been told specifically. Um, I know they're having some staffing concerns and the OCR, um, has been making with them about that, but I can't speak to that.
And they do not have females either. Their females are going elsewhere.
So as part of that study, it's really, you know, when we hear 47 beds or you hear 40 beds, when we really step into this, we really want to explore that for ourselves and really get the understanding of, of what's really going on in each of the counties, understanding what the costs are for transportation. But when we start looking at beds, it isn't, you know, I need five, I need three, I need four, whatever it may be. Uh, the classifications of how people are coming into the facilities are really start to dictate the number of visits that facilities are being constructed with, because it's, I always say it's a big piece of pie. And, uh, administration has to cut that piece of pie up into as many pieces as they possibly can to handle everything that's coming into the county jail at any given moment, right? Whether it's a female, whether it's two people committing a crime together, and how do we separate them? And so when we look at the number of beds, we're really looking at 80% capacity on average. Um, so you may find that you have need, have a need for more beds, not because you have that many people, but because of how you have to classify the people that are coming in the door. And so as part of that study and in this situation, it would be really sitting down with the five different counties and going through and finding out what the true needs are. And on top of that is what's the cost that you're, it's costing you today to handle what's coming in that door. All right. And then we start comparing that to what it costs to build a new facility. And, and really that to me, at least from our perspective is, we're not only doing the cost, cost estimating and saying, this jail three years ago cost this much in the southern part of the state. So if I add X percent of that, it should cost that today. I will tell you, that's a bad way of getting in trouble. Um, because as you guys all know, whether it's the cost of gasoline or the cost of steel, everything is inflated, right? Where it stops, we don't know. Some things have been slowing down, but it's really dissecting that a little bit more to get to real day costs. And when we start adding percentages to that, I think it gets into trouble because as we start going down that road further and the cost starts to escalate, the one thing everybody remembers is always the first number, right? And they'll say, but you said, well, if we're going to say something, we want to make sure we've done the homework and we presented that with factual data so that you can make educated decisions. That's really, when you look at what we do and how we do it, that's really the magic of why we do what we do and why we do so many county projects is it's bringing all of that factual data to you, while you make those decisions. And I, I think that's why, why we do as many as we do. So we're in the front of the room and we're really looking for your questions because, uh, we could talk about jails all day long and what we've done, but what we really need to do is understand what you're doing, the questions that you have, so that we can help get some direction and, and determine if that's the right fit, right?
Is there, uh, if you were to build a jail, you know, problem that a lot of us have is with females.
Hmm.
They mean, we can all take males. We, even when we have our jail, we've done, we'll go over the males. It's hard to find jails that will take females. And unfortunately, probably least the third or the fourth of them will be.
So as you go through that study, at least this is my opinion, as you go through that study, we're really looking at what you're trending. And the reason why people are looking place females is because they themselves may have classification issues. And putting the number of people that are, that are needed to go into the jail and the women keep getting pushed off because they're looking to put them in a, in a segment or into a different facility because they had, they traditionally had more males. So they may be having those experiences simply because of classification issues. So as you go through your study process, that population, your needs start coming out in that study. And that helps Scott start figuring out how to cut up that piece of pie and what that really means. And that, that's why you want to start that study is to really take a good, hard look of the inner workings of what you're dealing with every day and how that's trending so that we can start putting together space needs, block diagrams, so that we're heading in the right direction.
And most of your facilities, when you're getting smaller, you still have the same classifications as a larger facility. So that never goes away. I mean, you get male and female, then you get max security. Well, you got one of each of those, minimum security, medium security. So it doesn't take long before you realize you probably need at least 10 classifications. And most of the smaller facilities probably only have two or three abilities to separate people and a lot of it's the open bar system. So now you're in, you can't control the sight and sound. So that takes away, the females are the first to get shipped out because they're the smaller group. Um, so it's not really that the females are causing the problems. You can ship the males out, but they're a larger group. But that's, that's the biggest part of it. If you go look at, uh, any of the tours that you've done and you've been through, uh, Barnes County, um, you can interchange. All of those are set up gender neutral. You're just trying to do different, smaller groups so that you can classify them better. And then with mirroring of the glass, you can do sight and sound separation. You just have to watch when you're circulating them to programs and different things like that, moving them through the hallway system and things. Um, that's usually where you gotta, you gotta really pay attention. But yeah, it's just, it's about sight and sound. It's not a complicated system. But that just wasn't talked about in the seventies when more of your facilities were probably designed.
So when you look at, um, like, looking at coming up with these numbers that I suspect a lot of it is based on historical data, and, um, to me, I think that, you know, our last three years because of COVID have, don't necessarily provide a complete picture of where we're really at and what we need. So how do you, how do you factor that into when you're spending a lot of what the needs actually are?
The last few, um, we've got different national consultants that we work with that help us sift through that too. Um, what we're finding when we did the stuff down at CAS, we literally went through and went, I think we went 10 years back, but eight of it was good. And then you've got the COVID years that you say, okay, let's look at what that was because it was totally different during COVID. So you, you end up almost throwing out those years. But the farther you can go back, the better baseline that you get. I mean, if you're trying to do a projection based on two years, that thing could be climbing like that. You get 20, then you start to see a little bit of a heartbeat. Usually you are seeing some climbing, but it's probably a lot flatter than looking at a two or three or five-year period. So the more data you've collected, the better the projections will be. Again, it's not a crystal ball, but it's going to get you a lot more accurate. And you have to look at some, some facilities, they've suppressed the count. And you have to look at some, some facilities, they've suppressed the count. So they, you know, even before COVID, they started, they started just letting people out in the law, you know, whether the law changed or the judges changed, so they really, they had no room in a jail. So the judge just released people and they suppressed the number. So yeah, how do you factor in that? Because that's that whole thing. If you build it, they will come. A lot of that time is based on that suppressed volume. And now you've got the beds, that judge is putting people in them. And you get a pretty good jump the first few years until things kind of fluctuate and settle out, but that, that's pretty common.
I think the other thing to look at is your incarceration rate and how that's comparing to the other, you know, you can get county by county incarceration rates, but you can also look at that from a statewide and see how you're comparing to that, and that helps us with some of that trending as well.
You had mentioned the lease purchase program, can you expand on that a little bit, or?
Um, what, what the overall basis of it is, it's, uh, there are some companies that are doing it nationally, and where it really was starting was basically the company finds investors, so it's like selling a school bond and there's people that buy those bonds up. So what, what people were doing was doing it that way to try to circumvent the referendums or doing a, uh, being limited on how much you can raise your levy limits. So what they were doing was getting this lease purchase, so essentially you're paying for it one way or another, but by doing that, they try to circumvent the public being able to stop you from doing it. Because what you're doing is it's an operational cost and not a, not a property acquisition. At the end of the lease, you essentially buy it for a dollar or whatever you end up, you end up doing. So you really, you're making payments to them. Um, I certainly, I, I don't recommend it for everyone, but it's certainly something that you could make some phone calls, I can give you the data. Um, you're shaking your head no, maybe it's not?
Uh, I don't believe it's an option anymore.
Okay, I know it was at Rallette, I don't remember what Barnes did if they were doing something like that.
Century code, I think, recently changed, and so the cap is four million, I want to say. So it's allowed, but it's a much smaller.
Okay.
Cap, I think Barnes did that, he had done enough research to find out that somewhere. Um, but it sounds like since they did it, so previously, a century code changed.
And that's the catching up of why people were going around the public and the public got involved and, and did that. So, some states, yeah, it is still allowed, uh, but that's what it is, basically. You can do the same thing when, you know, you get pushed on your budget, you can lease purchase your generator. It's the same thing, you're still, you're still gonna buy it, like a lease of a car, you're still gonna pay for it. And it's just, you either own it at the end or you're turning it back. It's the same way with the building.
We, we had, we've had some experience with it, but they've never, they've never made it past the finish line. And what it was, is it was looking at what counties could borrow dollars for in comparison to what they were paying a developer to basically come in and, and construct the facility. Uh, and when they did the math, they ended up going back out to, to, to bonding, in bonding the, the facility. Um, I think it, a lot of those may work in like last step scenarios where they, maybe they failed a referendum or the, the taxpayers just simply don't want to pass a referendum. I wouldn't want to be out there doing that. Um, I think it's a matter of educating the public as to why. Um, it's not easy to pass referendums, because it's for bad guys, right? That's what everybody's viewing them as, and we have a sheriff down in, in Arizona and you can put a tent up and throw him bread and water, right? Why aren't we doing that? Well, we have state standards in which we have to pull. And it's a matter of educating them as to what that means. It also means educating them on the liabilities that as counties you, you have to accept when you have a jail. And if the jail has a number of deficiencies, there's a substantial amount of liability that goes with that. However, you're protecting our employees, all of that goes into that consideration. And so, for us, when we, as you saw with some of the, uh, community outreach, uh, we've been a hundred percent successful with the community outreach, and we've had a good referendum. Every one of them have passed, and they've not passed by fifty percent or fifty-one. Uh, they passed in the seventy-six, we had one, I think, at eighty. Uh, we've had some pretty substantial passes, and the reason being is that we took all of that information, whether it was social media, because some people love social media, and if you're like me, I don't love it so much. But I want face-to-face interaction. I can't tell you how many farmers I sat down with, they brought their land bills in or their taxes, and they wanted me to help them configure what that was really going to mean to them in community meetings. So, we created a, uh, worked with a couple of counties' finance groups. We actually created on the website, if you go out onto the website, you could actually put your tax, your parcel number in there, and it would actually compute the tax implication, or tax impact to you and your, your specific property. So it answered a lot of those questions that we were setting across the table and, and attempting to, uh, get to that number. So, it's really bringing that logical, factual information to the table. Um, there are going to be people that are going to say no, because they, they simply are going to say no, and there's nothing I, I can do, or anybody else can come here and tell you they can do. But there's a lot of those no's, that once they see the factual data, and they see what the impact is going on in the county, a lot of those turn yes. So, that, that, that's kind of my two takes, my take on that. The least thing, I, I don't like the idea as a taxpayer of not having control of that destiny. I think that, that is a negative, negative outlook on that to say, my county boardroom, my commissioners went and made a decision, and now they're going to use general, their general budget to pay for, but we had the opportunity to look at it from a referendum perspective.
Has the state done anything with grants for regionalization or some advantages of doing that? I know Minnesota's, you know, they're going through a lot of different sales tax options, taking it to the legislature and then to the public to fund it that way. Um, but are there any, any grants that you know of? There's none that I'm aware of, but we haven't dug into recently.
One other question I have, along a different line here, but, um, you know, if we look at a regional jail, I assume there's a couple of different ways that you fund them. Do you guys want to expand on that? I don't know, I mean, are we looking at on a per day basis from other counties? Or are you looking at getting mills from other counties to, you know, putting all the mills together for that jail? Um, just because we have multiple counties in here today, I thought it'd be good to hear it from you guys.
Yeah, we've run across it in a few different, we did the regional one over in Crookston. Um, there, it was a three-county facility, so the largest county was using eighty-five percent of the beds. So I, they had it set up as a joint powers board, so that no county sheriff was running it. So essentially, you elect a board and the counties are represented it, represented, and then they hire all the staff to run it, the facility. So, you can do it that way, and then basically, yeah, what you are doing is allocating that back um, on a bed usage rate. So if you're using, that, you, you kind of reconcile, you project for the next year, and then you reconcile it at the end of the year, but it's based on how much you did use it. So then you're paying for a portion of that bond, you're paying for that portion of, of, um, um, medical supplies and operational costs and things like that. So, you can certainly do it that way. You know, every once in a while, some of them start out with one county owning it, and then others may contribute to capital costs, or they may contribute, just saying, I just want to do a guaranteed bed rate and do it that way. Again, you'd have to look at that, whether you're, whether you're looking at some capital dollars coming in, maybe proportionally, um, and still running it through one county. Um, I'm not sure what the Southwest, what Dickinson is doing. Um, I'd have to dig into that, but I know it was a joint powers board, the one in Minnesota that we worked on. You know, that was kind of an interesting one, they kept us out of the loop on most of their financing. Um, we kept talking to them about, well, do you need corporate, you know, do you need some, some bond salespeople? And they worked it out with somebody, and we showed up at a meeting and they had it all worked out. So, I don't know if theirs was a lease purchase or not, um, or if that was just bonding. But they did, it's, there's no regionalization to it. They may be renting to other counties, but there was no capital outlay from any other county that I'm aware of. Regionalization, what I'll tell you over my years of experience, and I'm older than you think. Um, what ends up happening is regional has a great following, it, it makes all the sense in the world. And then where it falls apart is as long as it's in my county. And that's where it starts falling apart, is who's driving, how far are they driving, does that make sense? Because in some of your cases, it might be the largest, um, population, uh, for inmates that, that controls the facility. It might be the most centralized, may not be the largest. But yeah, then what you're doing is, if it's Walsh is owning it, the sheriff is managing that, it's his staff, it's their liability. Versus a joint powers where you're all liable, because you're hiring the staff to, to manage that. So again, that's the regionalization, you can distribute that liability and cost, but you've got to get everybody on board to do that, is that what is that, what is that magic formula? Um, paying per inmate, you know, how many, how many days you really got someone in there? Seems like a pretty fair way to do it, um, because it is proportional, how much you're using is what you pay for.
So some Southwest has set up theirs, the Southwest regional one, is, um, they have a joint power agreement, and they have a, they one percent of the dues divided, and then they also, um, pay rectum salary at the end of the year. And they have, what is it, seven, seven figures? They add up their, they have a dues, but they also pay a fee for, for dealing with that. Correct, so they pay a daily rate for each sentence.
So there, that county sheriff is not running it, the joint powers is running it. So essentially, if you were going to do that, and you located it here, the sheriff would simply lay off all of his staff, and then they would all interview with the joint powers, and all of your facilities could come to work for that, that group then.
When you talked about the pre-design, um, and you were discussing at the beginning, the, the cost and looking at the out, cost of transporting, you know, this is the courthouse, so is that something that you would do as well in pre-design to give us a sense of? I mean, we haven't, I know Judge Willen has talked about per needs with, you know, a lot of Zoom and having extra rooms for that, but is that something you would also provide to give us a sense of, of really what our needs and, and the costs with doing it versus not?
Yeah, I think you, I mean, you got to factor it in, there's a transport cost, whether you're walking somebody across a parking lot or you're driving them thirty miles. Um, I mean, you've got vehicles, you've got miles, you've got officers, so yeah, there's an operational cost to that, um, that should be calculated in. Is this location, if this is what's determined, is this what's best for all of you? Or is there any other facility, if Grand Forks adds on, is that a closer facility, is that a better solution for some of you? So, certainly, yes, we can go through there and, and work with the groups and just say, okay, let's figure it out. The one, the one good thing that came out of COVID was all the judges are now looking at Zoom arraignments, where before it was, oh hell no, we're not gonna, we're not gonna look at that. You're coming to the courthouse, I'm not coming to a hearing room in the jail, you're coming, you're coming to me. And now, most like it. Um, I mean, we've done all kinds of stuff from Zoom meetings, but we've done one, we're doing in Grand Rapids, uh, um, Minnesota, that it's a COVID courtroom, so if that ever happens again, every person that'll be in there will be six feet apart and setting it up that way. It's a huge courtroom to be able to do that. But yeah, I think you've got to, if, if your public is asking about it, you've got questions about it, I think you've got to put that in the study so that you've got answers. Because as soon as you can't answer those questions to the public, then people get skeptical that you're not really looking at it, or it's being deceitful, or you're hiding information. So, yeah, I think it's good to look at that.
So the micro result, you got four to six months of study, you got two months of education, and then nine to six days. Then as a body, we can't tell our constituents what's going to cost, so it's designed.
No, I think at the, during, um, that one, uh, chart that I had on there with the yellow star there, um, at that point, we know what the square footage is. You could certainly say, you know what, we've all toured Barnes County, we love it with the following exceptions. Um, we want one more classroom, we don't want, the intake is big. You can get a ballpark size of what these are. Um, I mean, Rallette was about sixteen thousand square feet, Montreal was about twenty thousand square feet. Again, forty-bed facility, forty-plus bed, um, so each is a little different size, but we certainly can give that to Sid's group, and they can start looking at, okay, how are you building that, what are the materials, what's kind of the configuration? And they can get a cost per square foot of starting to do that. Similar to, it, it's more detail, because it's specifically to you versus what Sid was talking about, taking Barnes County and saying, okay, what did that bid at, what, let's just inflate it to today. So it's got a general inflation to it, but not steel, the cells, the masonry, not everything individually. But yes, we can get you in a ballpark, because then, I mean, early on, you can say, that's, that's just not going to work, that's too much, how do we do it in phases, or what else can we do? What you want to be careful of is, now, Rallette, they have more beds in the same footprint for housing, but they have dormitory. And that's one of the downfalls of some of your facilities, is you've got four inmates in one, and they're open bars, so I'll call it a cage, but in that setting, so you can't, what people will say is, I can put anyone, any classification I can put in a cell. But there are only a few classifications that I can put in a dormitory with three, four, six other people. So, in a smaller facility, I would be cautious of saving money to do dormitory. Um, I would look at recommending more cells, just, it gives you, the small facilities, flexibility is probably the number one thing that you need.
Uh, to add to that, so as you get to the end of the study, this first phase, uh, there's a number that's associated with that, that we actually look at, put construction dollars and project dollars, we have a complete project budget, and the anticipated cost of what that project budget would be fairly early in the process. We deliver that with all of our studies.
What would be asked on Barnes County D C?
I don't know, I, I wasn't involved with that. Yeah, I can tell you this, this is why I don't like that, I don't like that question. Right, but we can give you lots of what costs and when they did. The, the problem we had, I'll give you an example in the construction, in the construction industry as it pertains just to corrections. Detention, the detention doors, the detention equipment, uh, I think it was three years ago, had an inflation of thirty percent, not of forty percent, but four hundred percent. So, how do you take that into account when you take a look at a Barnes and say, well, it was built here, we're going to add a factor of ten percent? We don't do that. So what we do, when we, we look at the end of the study and we start looking at all those components that go into the study, we actually break it out into segments so that we can apply that type of inflation to that specific category. Um, the cost of pre-cast, it went up, but it didn't go up nearly the, the percentage that everything else went up. So it's going to have a lower inflation rate. So taking that question, it's more about dissecting that question when it's specific to that, that facility, and then I can give you an answer. I would hate to give you a, a number today, because I promise you, you're gonna, you're gonna call me on it in the future, because it would be simply a guess.
Is there anybody from the press on? Because that's what he talked about early, was that first number that gets out there. What I can tell you is Barnes bid right around fourteen million for the facility they got, with soft costs and everything on it, was sixteen million is what they funded. So, I think Sheriff and, uh, Jason, I think the number, we had that construction manager, again, a general inflation, not per division, not per product, but inflated it up, and I think that number was, was, uh, between twenty and twenty-one million, I think. Was it a little higher than that? Well, I, I know one of the numbers they sent up, the law enforcement side of, the sheriff's office side of it was a bid alternate that did not get bid, and I think the first number they sent up included that alternate that didn't get bid on top of it, and I think that took it from, that was about a three and a half million dollar alternate. So I think that took it from a twenty to a twenty-six, instead of the way, I think you were looking at it early on was, well, let's take Barnes, we, that's the jail we, we like, um, or close to, and then instead of doing dispatch, putting the sheriff's office in there. So it really was more to what they actually built at sixteen, I think, then inflated up was, was again in that twenty to twenty-one, again, just to give you as commissioners. Again, just to give you as commissioners, something to to think about. But again, that's not taking into account, you know, when Sid was talking about the detention industry, when it went from three different cell manufacturer models for steel and it went down to one because two went out of business. When detention doors and frames were down to one, now it's back at at two, maybe a third. So again, that's really wrecking havoc and that can be a third of the cost of the facility. So again, I think that's really looking at the components and not just a flat, what's that inflation rate? But I I don't want to dodge a question, just, but I want to be honest with you and give you an idea at least based on that. That's where it happened.
The square footage from what we were talking to, just walking on dispatch, the sheriff's office doesn't work. You have to go to the full gamut.
Thank you, halfway, only twenty minutes.
Okay, so maybe the dispatch goes away, but that area wasn't enough to hold the sheriff's office. So it'd be a little bit of a hybrid, so maybe in there. Now again, if you're doing regional, that, that's really, that's really Walsh County is doing the law enforcement, you've got a hundred percent of that. So what would be the sharing of just the jail component?
That's why those numbers, again, I don't mean to dodge or crouch around, but I would rather say I can't give you that answer today and give you an accurate number that I feel comfortable with. I think everybody in the corrections world that does corrections knows better not to do that. And so I would never do that to you. If we give you a number, it's because there's been well thought process in it. And we break it, and it's that we can show you why, because when we show you square foot numbers and jails, it's just craziness. But when you look at all the components that go into it, because jail is a very complex building, it's not, it's not school. It's not a house, right? It's got very sophisticated systems inside of that facility that costs lots of dollars. That inflate the cost per square foot. So the public, go back to informing the public, when you tell them that you're going to build a facility and it's going to cost X million dollars, we need to explain the reasons why. Because they think twenty-six million or twenty million or whatever you put out there, they can't comprehend what that number means. Give me twenty million dollars, I'm, I'm in Mexico sucking on a, right? So we, they can't understand that. So how do we break that down so that they can understand it? And it's down to what it costs them on the house, what it's costing them every year, so they can put it back into perspective. That is critical to to that success. But getting it broken down into those components is going to be very, very, very critical to your success there. Because the bad guys must be getting this beautiful Taj Mahal because it costs twenty million dollars. They're not, right? They're getting painted concrete floors, a concrete boat. It's not pretty in there, but it's highly sophisticated with the systems that are going into it and that's what drives those costs.
But I think at the end of, at the end of a study, you'd want to have that, have that number. So you know, what's the law enforcement component of it, what's the jail component of it? And and basically, we can give you a design image, so we can do that rendering, so you have an idea, okay, what are the materials? Because it'll look different if it's downtown than it might look if it's a little more at the edge of town.
Oh, okay, so let's say we figure out how to build it, right? We come up with a way to build it, and they just, we can build a jail. Do you also provide the numbers to us on how we operate the jail, our annual operating was going to be? Because we're, we're in a situation right now where we're bumping up against our max mill that we can use. So we have to be able to, yeah, break if we can build a jail, but we still have to build a function and operate that jail and have the money to do so on an annual basis. Do you guys work with any of that, do you provide any of that data to us?
We can do that, working with Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation has involved them during the study. I would highly recommend that, there's no reason not to. Bring them in as a trusted partner in that, so that as you start looking at those concept layouts and how housing might be and where intake is, start looking at that in terms of staff, okay? I've got one person in a control, well, if that's a post, that's five people for a post, twenty-four, seven. Okay, and and really take a look at that and use them to help generate that staffing plans. So then you know what it's going to be. Because sometimes they'll look at and they'll say, okay, well, if you're talking about operating it, that person has to supervise the inmates over here, but they have to go over here and check out an inmate doing laundry. Boy, if you could move your laundry closer to where they're circulating, you can do that with that staff. But if you leave it where you've got now, I think you're going to have to put an extra half a staff on during one shift or something like that. So yes, you can do that, and you know the cost with benefits of of a per staff. So yeah, you can calculate that out. So staffing, not that hard to calculate. I think you can do transporting the same, the same way, how you're paying for medical, put costs to those things. So I think that's easy enough to do, the engineers, based on the the systems that you're going to put in. I think they can get, work with the local utilities and figure out what the heat and lights are going to be and give you some ballparks of that. So again, it's more than just that bricks and mortar, because you can solve that. And the operational cost will just kill you and then just that, that's doesn't get any better, doesn't go away.
So I always say it's the cost of doing nothing versus the cost of doing something, right? Cost of doing nothing is exactly what we do today, and there's a cost to do what you're doing, right? What's the cost to do something into the future, whether it's build a new facility, whatever that solution may be? And it's a matter from a taxpayer, they want to understand what that is and what this is to help define what they're paying on the cost. And that, that is all part of that process. And it's really working with staff, with your staff, with sheriff's department to figure out what all those nuances are. We did a project down in Iowa, speaking of of remote and Zoom, they actually put their, put a courtroom right in the jail. It was a secure courtroom, they did it right there, the judges agreed, they would, they would come there and it, what it is, is a lot of first appearances. And what it did is it allowed them to move it away from the courthouse, it kept the people where they needed to be, and it helped reduce that transportation cost. And so just being creative and looking at those types of solutions that may work for you, it may not. If you're a regional, it may work really well for the five counties that are transporting inmates back and forth for appearances. So there's things that we can look at within the facility to customize it to fit your needs as a region.
So certainly, any study, the more counties you can get to participate in that, if you're going to be regional, get a representative for that. If you've got some community leaders, even if they might be negative, sometimes they're the biggest advocates by the end of the study. Because they're out there talking about that.
I had several people suggest to me that was beside a Wells Fargo building and convert it into a police jail. So as part of your study, will you also be able to talk about why that won't work? Or?
Oh, see, now there, you started with the assumption it's not going to work. I I have looked at putting them in hospitals, old hospitals, I've looked at putting them in old vacated shopcoves, grocery stores. So yes, we can look at any building that you think might be underutilized, vacated, you certainly can look at that. Some of those work out okay for office settings, jail stuff, not, not so much, they're usually metal buildings. It's hard to convert something into a jail and a jail into something else, just by its construction. But again, the public will ask, so it's worth even a cursory review. Because all of you have to answer the public when they run into you and you're out, you know, sheriff's out buying cookies for a meeting and somebody's going to say, hey, did you, did you look at that Wells Fargo? And he can say, yeah, we looked at it and here are the three main reasons we did not pursue that. Site's too small, we looked at the renovation cost, it's cheaper to build new than it was to renovate that. And it's not the efficient layout, so it's going to kill us in staffing. That's probably going to be your answer, but he's going to know that answer. He's not going to guess at it, you'll all know that answer.
We're currently doing that for a community center, an old community center that they're looking at. There's an option to convert to to the sheriff's department and the jail. And jail construction is just hard, it's hard construction, right? It's it's masonry, it's rebar in the masonry, it's crowded full, it's, it, it, there's a reason for it. So when we look at these types of facilities, it's just very, very difficult sometimes, specifically to the jail and be in that, the type of construction that's required, it's very difficult to make that happen. If you've got a facility and we want to include it in the study, there's no reason why we couldn't do that because we've done that elsewhere.
And they can take on any look. I did one in Wheaton, Minnesota, that was a eleven-bed jail inside of a wood-structured building. Trust me, I tried to get a bunch of people to tell me no way and heck could I do it and they couldn't. It worked out code-wise, Department of Corrections allowed it as long as you maintain that secure perimeter. The wood trusses aren't the perimeter, but it had a lot of steel mesh in there. So you can do it inside of a pre-engineered metal building. So you can, the outside can look like a lot of different things as long as you maintain that security bubble inside.
When we go through with the Barnes County, you come up with a five-year term. How many years have you been doing that? Twenty years or twenty-five?
A typical bond is twenty years.
Twenty years?
Obligation bonds are usually twenty.
Yeah, I think you can, I think you have to look at what's that payment plan and what you can do, how far out do you have to go? Part of it is, when you're planning all of this, is to figure out, how far do you want to build? Do you want to build it smaller and and it lasts you ten years? And based on the projections, you need to expand it in that amount of time? So if you're financing it for twenty, but you're building onto it in ten, that's problematic. So you want to take a look at some of those things. Because we can certainly give you the projections and tell you how long we think it's going to last you based on the current conditions. And then you really kind of look through there and say, okay, what does that, what does that mean to us? Do we want it to be fifteen years, twenty years? I wouldn't go beyond twenty. And again, it's just like looking backwards, the farther you can look back, the more accurate your numbers will be. But looking forward, getting past five or ten years, it gets, gets a little cloudy with what will the laws be and what will we be doing differently then versus now? So yeah, nobody's building it, if you're building a thirty-year facility, you're going to end up in the newspaper because you built it too big.
Yeah. It's really the length of that bond. That's what people want to know is, what what can we do in that period of time? And if we find ourselves, will we build it too small with the anticipation that we're going to build it bigger in ten years? When we go to educate the public, that becomes critical that they understand that, because you may get to the end of that ten years and they're not willing to to fund that. So educating them out of the gate and understanding what that is. But typically, that twenty-year, because it's a twenty-year obligation, it's, we're looking to do our best to project that solution would be for that period of time.
I know we're running up against the clock here. I don't know if you kept track, if there's anybody that's online that may have raised their hand or had questions that we didn't get to?
One or two, if you're too busy to ask, because I think there are a lot of them, so you should ask if they have any questions.
Yeah, does anybody online have any questions before we wrap up?
What are our next steps?
Well, I think you'll want to get somebody on board that you're comfortable with to start the study process. I think you're doing what you can as far as regionalization, how you might do that. Hopefully today has answered questions to get you farther. At some point, I think you'll need a professional to to get into it, start sizing that, getting you those definitive answers. So yeah, I think even while you're working on your funding, again, you may wait until you have funding sorted out before you start this. But a a study is never, if it's done right, it's never a waste of your money, you'll always be able to come back to it. So I think that's where you're at is is looking at interviewing, RFQ, whatever you're going to do to select a, a study team. And get started with that. If you know you're going to do something, you certainly can do the study as a component of a larger project. Because we're working together on one in Michigan where they're going to do the exact same thing. They're going to start with a study component, and then when they get approval, then they'll move into design with the same team. So that's one way that they're doing it. The boards always have to approve, moving from one phase to another, and you can stop a contract in one day's notice and say, it's not working out. So don't be scared by a longer duration contract because you control who's working on it and how long. But yeah, I I think you're at that study point where you've got some committees, you've got some interests. I think you probably need to get somebody on board to help you sift through and keep answering those questions and get you the information to back that up.
Don't we have to have some kind of commitment from the other county? We need to get a meeting together with the other counties, actually, no one will let us do it.
It would be best to know who's probably on board. Are you looking at leasing beds as a guarantee? Are you looking, are you looking at building? Because it might make a difference of, you might need a thirty-six-bed facility, but if everybody is coming aboard, you might do fifty beds. So yeah, you'd want some commitment out of that at some point, that they're on board with whatever that is financially so that you can make plans for that. If you're doing a joint powers, do you start looking at some of those things? So certainly, it'd be nice if you were all moving at the same, same pace that you did, come in and hire somebody to do Walsh and then you come back three months and you go, well, here's what you need. And then three others show up and say, okay, we do want to be part of it. So it'd be, it'd be good to do that. But again, if you're going to do, you've got some time to do that, if you're going to do solicitation and hire a design planning team, that's going to take you a little while to do that anyhow, so. But yeah, you can do some of those things simultaneously.
You you could also break your, you know, from a costing perspective on the, on the study. Do you have a number of counties that are looking at participating at this level? They just have the way things are priced and have each of those counties. Because frankly, if I was a, if I was a county and I was looking at coming in and joining with Walsh, I just simply want to know what my commitment is and I want somebody coming in and taking a look at my facility and say, what is, what is it that you guys need specifically? So as a, as a commissioner, I can go to my constituents and say, we're going to join this study because this looks like the right thing to be doing. But I would have a a good depth look at my county specifically, which is going to help that study team when they start looking at the overall size of the facility. Because if somebody doesn't participate, you're going to have less of a need. So you definitely want to look at each of the individual counties in regards to what their specific needs are, what they have today, what's their solution? That may include X number of beds in an overall facility, it may not. To me, that's how I would approach that study is, everybody that wants to participate should share in a portion of the study.
One study that not private.
Oh, yeah, I, I would, I would. Yeah, I would, I would do it that, and you certainly can divide the study into pieces. And and you, so then, as you're studying that, you know everybody's needs. And then you get to that point of, okay, now, here's what we all said we needed, who's in? So I think you could still do that.
I would, if I was one of the, one of the counties that was looking at coming in, I'd want to know exactly what my needs are today, moving into the future. And does this make good sense for my county to participate in that? And I think that answer would come out in that study and say, this is the best thing that we can do for our county. Or maybe it's not, at least you have all of that information that you can use and all that factual data to help substantiate what our decision is.
And for that, it takes about the same amount of time, I know smaller counties probably don't want to hear that, but probably takes about the same amount of time to search through that data for four beds as it does sixteen.
Right.
So to simplify it, again, you're making some pretty big decisions for a little bit of cash upfront. This is, this is the smartest cash that that you'll spend. Because it's affecting millions of dollars for thousands invested at the beginning.
Yep.
So to me, it's telling me like our next step is to contact the other counties with a firm deadline as to if they want to participate in the study or not. So we can get moving, but we need to move the most counties, we need to get this going.
Yeah.
So we can't really wait much longer, so would that be fair? With them on that, with a deadline to say if they want to participate in the study or not? With them knowing that there's going to be a cost for them to participate in the study?
Yeah, I think that's fair. And it's not, it's committing them for some dollars and to participate in the study. It's not committing them to join in a regional built solution, that can come when they have more data.
And we'll have the amount we can give them, I mean, you can tell us what the study will cost.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
From a perspective, in the education piece, when I think of the different counties, will there be a part in that marketing standpoint too for them? Like, you know, it's great for Walsh that you're able to say, this is where you'd be. Will they, will those counties have that as well? So they could see that for taxpayers?
If I was one of those counties, I would say, anything you're doing for this project, you should be doing for me. Because I have a responsibility to my taxpayers and my constituents in regards to the decisions that we're making on behalf of all of you. So if there's a presentation for Walsh, there should be presentations for other counties. So that all of those people understand what they're truly getting into.
There's one website too that basically would be the regional site which all counties can link to, which would have all of the data for this project. So is, is that helpful?
Yeah, when we did Mercer County, we, we spent two days up there and we went to five different towns, just in, just for Mercer County. So yeah, you could certainly say, you know, because you're going to want to do a day, you're going to want to do a night, you're going to want to do some different days of the week. But you could certainly host them all within a week and say, it's the same data. So even if we're coming to your county, but if you can't make that night, you can also see it in these other counties also. But yeah, I would think you'd probably want to figure that out and say, yeah, we think we're going to, for every county, we want to do two meetings within the county. And do something like that. I, that's a good thing to do. Because you don't want it to just seem like this is, yeah, we're part of it, but all the meetings are always at Walsh and we can't always make that. I mean, you're going to want to go into all those communities and just give them a chance to be there.
Are there any other questions?
Well, if you've got more questions, feel free to ask and we'd be more happy to answer them for you. And when you come back and do this again for another people, let us know, we'll be back for that. But really, it's a matter of just leading you through this process and making sure you're in the right direction and that you've got the factual data to answer to who you need to.
Well, if there's anything else, we'll probably, during this portion, we'll just pull the card.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Can you guys hear me? Okay, and everyone's going to jump on with their Zoom?
Yes.
No, we're using the, we're going to use the office that will make it easy. But it will move to where people are sitting. So we'll get ready, and then all of a sudden, you'll just hear a bunch of background noise.
I don't know, I couldn't hear any what you said. He says they're going to move because of the background, but that's okay.
We're just getting ready, so I'm just muting so you don't hear a bunch of background noise. And then when we're ready to go, they're just getting resituated, then we'll unmute.
So they'll be close to where I can hear them?
Yep, yep, you'll hear everybody.
Okay, thank you.
We're going to have to move up here closer?
I would move, I would move here because you really can't get back very well. So if I was talking, I'd have it right here and then when he starts, I'll focus on him.
Everybody want to move up?
Well, I mean, it's just under the clock.
Okay.
Okay, I'm getting background noise on this.
Oh, yes, we need to.
Well, if we're ready, we'll call the meeting in order. We've already set the pledge, we'll move into additions to the agenda. Amy?
No.
Christie?
I have a couple of updates from the department meeting I'd like to discuss.
Karen, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Any additions to the agenda?
No, I don't.
Ernie, are you on?
Yeah, but I don't have anything now.
Okay. I've got two things, I guess, just an update on the audit. And possible money for the fixing up the extension office. There are motions to approve the consent agenda in January third, commission meeting minutes.
Some.
Their second?
Second.
All those favors say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Do you want to discuss anything about the Samuel group or? Just move ahead without.
Jenny, I'm wondering, is, is this something that Kelly needs to put together for the counties from a standpoint of interest? To proceed with the study? My fear is, is nothing will happen between now and the next meeting?
I think Tanya is chair, correct?
Or I didn't know from a lawyer or legal perspective, you know?
There, that was, I stayed because I wasn't sure if there was justice any further.
Glad you did stay.
I, that's a valid point. Might be, I just wonder if I was another county and we were asking them to participate in the study, I feel like their first question or their first response is going to be, what's it going to cost us to participate in the study, right? So I almost think then we just need to get an estimate from them as to what the study would cost, including all. Right now, we have five counties that have expressed some level of interest.
Four, right, four?
I mean, it's five, but maybe it's just four.
Is Nelson, have you gotten?
Nelson's heel trail, seven, nine, seven.
Not Nelson, Nelson is not, um, expressed. They have not gone back, so Nelson is.
They, there, I believe, if I am not mistaken, I spoke to the auditor and the auditor left, their former auditor left. And so did their chair in that timeframe when we sent that letter. So they thought, the current auditor thought the letter, that it was kind of lost in the shuffle. And they thought that they might still be interested. I did resend the original letter that the commission sent out, I just sent it via email. But they didn't participate today, so maybe that means that they are interested. So, or maybe at this point in time for sure. But I guess I feel like their first response is going to be, yeah, maybe we want to do the study, but we don't know. And then I don't know what the regulations are, how much can we spend without doing an R and P? One of those guidelines potentially, though, you know, I don't know. If we're just looking for an estimate on what the study would cost?
I would like to know that for Walsh County. We don't know.
Yep.
And do we know that we're going with the Samuel's group?
Exactly.
You know, we haven't made the decision yet, so.
Right, I did try to conduct some other research, looking for other agencies that provide a similar service. And I struggled to find any that had covered the same package of services that Samuel's group is explaining to us. So there might be others out there, they're very welcome, I didn't find any yet.
And I haven't either. Here's your question.
I believe spending over twenty-five thousand dollars.
Thank you, and that's what I was thinking, that I wasn't confident. If you break it down, I don't know if anybody would use R and P. If we, if, for example, just throwing a number out for conversation, if it's fifty thousand dollars to do the study, you know, we're all going to pay under nothing, take it up five ways.
With the Samuel's group, I mean, do we proceed at this point with Tanya reaching back out to the Samuel's group? In asking them for not only the cost of the study, but also a breakdown that would give us more information of what that would include? So that the counties really did have, if we sent them something, it would be very obvious what that was and not more than that. So they, they really felt comfortable, not like he said, you're in for the whole jail, this is just.
Simply the study and this is what you're getting for this dollar amount. I, I respected Sid, Sid Samuel, I think was the, he's president of the city. I really appreciated his point of view because he really puts himself in there, she was a lot saying, well, before I made this decision, I wanted to know this, you know, what I think, so. Yeah, I feel like counties are going to want to know before they make any decisions, even if it's going to cost them, you know, a hundred dollars. They're going to want to know something more before they give us an answer.
So you'll reach out to them and find out?
That's what you want me to do. I will contact them again and ask for an estimate on what the study would cost and what all it would entail. What does that include and for each county, what does that include? That, I was glad they clarified that at the end because I had that question and was waiting for the opportunity to ask it. You know, if they're going to go to every single county and give us that breakdown and sit down with the farmer at the table and say, like, this is what it's going to cost you to do this or this. I mean, I think that's important for everybody to have that information. Otherwise, we're not going to have any money in front, which is what we feel we need, so.
Very good.
I can do that if that's what you want.
Yeah, any other questions about it? Well, we'll move on to Ed.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening.
Evening.
First agenda for myself is an abatement from Walter Goff owns a property in Google to twenty-twenty-two Marble Avenue. The original true rental value for the two thousand twenty-two tax year was sixty-one thousand. He did file an abatement for only the two thousand twenty-two tax year. He builds a structure value, exceeds the current market value. Him and I were able to get together to complete a physical inspection of the property. It consists of a one and three-quarter story home built in nineteen-ten, in below normal condition for its age. And a detached garage built in nineteen-seventy-four, also in below normal condition for its age. Again, include a picture of the exterior in the packets for reference. The windows replaced in two thousand eight, siding and roof were replaced in two thousand twenty, but some of the siding is not in place at this time. So the exterior has been remodeled for the last few years. However, when you go inside the house, it's currently completely gutted, no floor coverings, no bath fixtures, no kitchen cabinets. Furnace in the basement is not in working condition. So the interior and exterior are vastly different as far as the. Furnace in the basement is not in working condition, so the interior and exterior are vastly different as far as the condition that it's in. And the original value, basically based off the exterior condition. Enclosure aid is also enclosed. That's the cost approach, using our Vanguard Cost Manual. Structure of our value using depreciation charts based upon their age, condition, and being located in the city of Houple. This cost approach indicated a total true and full value of the property of $25,500. The city of Houple did approve this abatement to reduce true and full value to $25,500. And I recommend that the Walter County Commission approves this as well.
We need a motion to approve the abatement. Some moved. There are second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Well, we'll call for the vote. Karen?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Ernie, Ernie, are you on?
Still here, yes.
Okay. Did you wanna vote on the? The abatement?
Yes.
Okay. Let us know, Ernie, when you get off, so we know what, for the minutes.
Okay.
And then budget. All right, second item, just to amend the tax director's budget. For the 2022 year, the budget came in over, just under $4,200 over the budgeted amount. This is because the, starting in August, the deputy tax director's salary was paid 100% of my budget. And before that, we have been splitting it 50-50 between my budget and the recorder's office. That was not budgeted for or anticipated, so without, if we would have continued to split that deputy's salary, the budget actually would have come in $4,500 under. That was originally budgeted, so that is the reason for the increase in the budget. You should see an increasing, of course, one decrease in what was spent for the deputy's salary and recorder's budget to offset that.
We need a motion to amend that?
Some moved.
There are second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
Just for the record, for the 2023 budget, now we did budget the entire salary to come out of tax.
We'll call for the vote, Ernie?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Christie?
Yeah.
Myself, yes. Motion carried.
It's just an update on the deputy position. Yesterday was the dead original deadline. Due to lack of opportunity, we have extended it two more weeks, so January 30th is the new deadline. Anything else for me?
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ed. Brett?
And so I have a few different items for this evening. Start with just a note, in case you haven't seen it. The National Weather Service is no longer able to provide flood forecasts for the Park River at Draftin', the river point no longer. Because of the diversion, all of that full bypasses the gauge site, so it's almost irrelevant for them to try to forecast. For them to say that the river gauge at Draftin' can get 15 feet when the diversion's been to divert all that water, it'll never hit 15 feet. So there still is a plan to work, like through my office, provide some sort of forecasting for Park River, so we know for more of the rural people what potential there is in that. That area, but over the next couple of years or so, we'll have to kind of see what issues and problems we have, what type of information we actually need. So, but that's far as an official, when the flood forecast come out, you will no longer see the Park River or Draftin' site on that report day longer. First, the list was budget amendments. I have two of them. One is for the 911 cell account.
Okay, is this something, can I just ask?
Yeah.
Is this something we provided, the budget amendments, or did you just hand it out? Now I just have to find it?
No, I didn't hand that out, because I didn't need the grant.
Oh, so we don't have anything?
No, you don't have anything for the budget.
Okay. I just wanna make sure I wasn't looking for something.
Yep, so the, so the two budget amendments I have is one is for the 911 cell account for $1,001,2650. And the other is for the 911 landline emergency account for $17,17210.
Can you say that one again, please?
Landline account for $17,17210.
That were over or?
They were over. And the other account is $1,001,2690. And the reason these accounts were over is because in 2021, we budgeted to pay for all of the sirens and dispatch upgrades. And the majority of bills in the 12th of February this year. So they were, you know, they originally were budgeted for, then we didn't pay them, but I didn't rebudget because to pay them all in 21. So then the dollars got paid out in, not due to that, in February, or when we were, we were just, you know, just paying the bill for the 911 account, and then we just manned the budget. 911 account has some money to cover. There's no, there's no, you know, there's revenue in that 911 account for the dollars that we spent, because they were budgeted to be spent the prior year, but we just didn't get spent out of that year's budget.
Okay.
So because of the way the billing came from the state of North Dakota, we didn't get it paid until this year.
But the same power is out of what?
It's out of the, there's two 911 accounts. One is, is for landline phone, the 911 landline, and then the other one is cell phone account. We were supposed to keep those two accounts separate originally, so they've always just maintained as two different accounts. The one is, one reflects the landline from like your house phone company and revenue.
That's a $17,000, is it, the cell line?
Yeah, that was the account that had the biggest, the most budgeted out of it, to get the largest amount of revenue in it at the time.
You don't have any money anywhere for that?
Well, that money was in the 911 account. It just wasn't part of this year's budget. It was part of last year's budget. So it wasn't in this year's. So the money was in the 911 account, so it didn't, I mean, there's still funds in the account to cover that expense.
It's just more of a bookkeeping issue.
It's just more of a bookkeeping, because there wasn't, the official budget for this year did not cover those costs, because they were budgeted in 21. And then it got paid out in 21, and now it came out.
Okay.
Do we need a motion to? Rememb the budget?
Some moved.
For a second?
I'll second.
Any further questions? Now we'll call for the vote. Karen?
Yes.
Ernie?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Motion carried.
Hey, the next item is emergency medical dispatch or EMD system. There was something that was in your email packet that was sent out regarding the. Apple stuff, and I also handed out a sheet, and I, I sent that sheet to Karen by email. I'm sorry, Ernie, I guess I thought you were gonna be at the meeting, so I didn't send it to you ahead of time at the. Through email. Anyway, just a little history is, in the dispatch center for 911, we have what we call emergency medical dispatch cards that we utilize. Or like, so somebody calls them a medical car call. You know, say they're choking or they're shortness of breath, there's a set of questions that they can ask, and kind of give them some things that they can respond with. Those cards have been in place since 911 started. The cards that we currently are using for the last 20-plus years have been provided by the state of North Dakota, through the state health department. They're called the North Dakota cards. Within the last year here, the state of North Dakota doesn't really want to support them or do anything with them. We've been fighting with them for the last few years to get them to update them and to maintain them, and they kind of want to wash their hands of them. In short of them actually sending on anything official that says they are no longer maintaining those cards. But the last meeting they were at, that was kind of the impression they gave us, that that is something they are looking to get away from. And they do everything from certifying and hiring instructors to teach the class to updating and writing the cards. And the cards were usually always covered by the cost through North Dakota, Apo, and the counties paying for them, and. But they don't seem to wanna deal with that anymore. So, since it started developing about a year, two years ago, several of the counties have jumped ship, because we are required to provide insurance medical dispatching as part of a 911 center. So several of the counties that were using the state cards have moved to these Apo, Apo cards from Apo to national organizations, association of public communication officials. Richland County's moved home, Star County, Grand Forks County, Cavalier County's in the process. So there's several of them that are moving, moving away from the North Dakota cards. Right now, probably the biggest user of the North Dakota card is state radio, and I'm not sure what they're going to do down the road here yet. So I did look into these cards from Apo, or, and there was a couple of options. So if you look at kind of that little cheat sheet I gave you, instead of a bigger document. There's what they call their telecom software, a guide card, which is a software package that not only provides questioning and protocol for EMS, it also does it for law and fire. Comes at the price of $22,358. And then if we wanted to tie it in and incorporate it into our CAD system, that would cost an additional $8,655. We only wanted a couple new cards. It would be approximately $1,545. Then there's a couple of training options. Wanted to do it all of the training and certification online, which would be $4,020, and it requires a new train and have a individual that's. Classified as a program manager, that monitors the program, ensure everybody does all of the certification, ensure that they get training in, with immediate training in, so on and so on. The other method is to do a self-training program. Initially costs $21,180. Again, we still have the program manager, and then we would train somebody to be the dispatch instructor, and we would also need a medical instructor, which has to be an EMT advanced or a paramedic. So somebody, somebody from one of the ambulance services could provide that service for us. The software version has an annual cost of $2,000 for Apo, with about $4,000 per cent per square, and the annual trading costs. Are about $30,95, and a new dispatcher would be $419,99, if you did the local training. I'm not necessarily looking for a decision tonight. I'm just looking to see what your thoughts are. I believe I have most of the funding in place for the computer software. We have to go that way, the initial cost. It would be an ongoing cost without. That is what Dickinson, Cavalier County, Grand Forks are all using, the digital, or the, or, Grand Forks and Dickinson, I know, are using the, the software version. Cavalier is, they're in the process of getting the software version. Richland County started with the cards, and they are now moving towards the software version.
Why is that?
It provides more options, it's better to, it provides more accountability, that allows us to do more monitoring, tracking of whether the dispatchers are actually doing. What they're supposed to do, rather than it logs everything in the computer system, rather than they relying on the, actually ground the card and ask the questions. Where you have to basically go through the software and, you know, show that you ask each question and mark it off, and provides random pulls of quality assurance for others to perform on.
So is this kind of similar to, one day I was in your office and you could pull up the actual dispatch conversation? Is this something that would be replacing that, or it was a recording?
No, the recorder's still there, but you can have all this stuff tied together, so it'll, so then you can, so this was, so then if you wanted to do quality assurance on the medical call, they would randomly select a call, and then it would show you that it'll be at the CAD system, this is that information, here's recording information, you can pull that all together, review it all. To ensure that the dispatcher's performing that, the other way you want them to perform.
So liability wise, would be better off on the $22,000?
Well, there's more accountability.
Accountability.
So. And the, the main, the main thing with this is that, you know, depending on what you decide or where you wanna go tonight, is either one of these, it's probably six plus months to get it implemented, because. The way Apo does their cards, whether it's the cards or the software, they send you a template, and then they expect you to go through it like with a committee. If it's just the EMD part, I would meet with the ambulance, the hospital, and say, okay, is there anything we wanna change in these cards for us to specify them to Walsh County? And then a medical director, one of the local physicians, would have to sign off on, saying that he agrees with these cards. If we do the software, which would also include the law and fire, so then we'd have to work with law and fire to ensure that those questions that they're asking in there are the appropriate questions. So it'll take, it'll take several months to get the process to the point where we're actually going to use it to have a train to use it.
But I think from a perspective, like if someone is choking or someone has an allergic reaction or something, this is basically saying they can pull up. And then you're verbally hearing exactly what was, like you said, it gives a little bit of that check and balance on what's going on or what they're doing.
Right, and it makes it more functional for the, because it'll, it'll bring up that cards that automatically on the computer screen, you know, so that they're not looking for the book, and they're trying to find the cards that they need and.
So you're talking physically look through a book and physically find all?
Yeah, the card sets they have now are basically a flip book that, I mean, they have CAD on it, it's a chestband, whatever, so if they grab the book, they buy chestbands, they look for that book, and then they can start asking.
Clicking on.
But there's no place, you know, unless they can physically type them back into the CAD or do something separate, you know, there's no way of. Tracking which questions they actually asked. You know, they can note in there that they refer to chestband card, but, you know, you can go back to the recording and try to determine exactly if they asked all the questions, or. But this will log all of those steps, and it, and also reinforce it to them what they should be asking, because some of them, some of them have it on a regular basis, and they don't necessarily always ground the cards in. I mean, they just know that this is the question, this is the information I need, well, this is going to put it in front of them at all times, so they need to go through those steps. They can't just decide that, I know what's in the card.
Mr. Tim, question? Did you say what we were getting through North Dakota right now, that was, we have charts, so this would, or?
Well, we bought the books for like $50 a piece.
Oh, but minimal.
But they, they were minimum cost, yeah. Because basically the. This is, this is the local North Dakota Apo chapter that basically put all the cards together, that the state health department just certified them and. Made them do what they approved, and then they, they're the agency that endorsing them, because really, as a local agency, we have no authority to say that these are, so unless there's a health organization backing them, they're failing.
So we're looking at a one-time fee, if we were to go with the software, a one-time fee of the $22,000, and then would there be an annual fee after that? I'm just trying to.
It would be 22 plus the eight, because that, that's what our CAD vendor would charge you incorporated into our system.
So we're looking at a total cost of $30,000, one-time cost of $30,000?
Correct.
And then after that, is there an annual fee?
Yeah, it would be that software version annual cost.
Oh, that's okay, sorry.
About six grand a year.
Yeah, I wanna, I wanna think about this a little bit.
I won't, I mean, I, for a small county, I think it's just a lot of money. I don't, I'm not why I'm, I'm throwing it in front of you, asking you what to think, what you want to. Where do you wanna go with it?
Chairman, is, are you aware of what other counties are doing? I mean, is there any offset with any of the other, the health, you know, hospitals, getting money to kind of go in for this, being this would benefit law, fire, from that perspective?
I guess I don't know that any of them are, you know, there's some of them have gotten funding from different places for the eventual purchase, but not necessarily for the ongoing cost.
I like the idea that, you know, it's going to help our dispatchers, and it's, it's going to help you ensure that they are asking correct questions, right? I, I like that, but this is not cheap. I mean, we just turned down software for the county for. You know, for time and attendance, because it was 30, I don't remember, 38,000 or something. It was very expensive. So I guess I, I wanna ponder this a bit.
Yep, that's fine. I was trying to get it in front of you. Man and doctor, get it in front of us, so. Yep, that's fine, I'm just trying to get it in front of me, I would like, man, I'm desperate to get it in front of me, so. The next item on there is, uh, my pickup, the. Ongoing saga with my pickups, which I'm trying to replace for the last four years or so. So I'm just looking for, again, some recommendations of what you would like me to do. The sheet I gave you is the, the state bid for pickups, there are no. Uh, there is no bid for a half ton pickup of any sort, other than Nelson's Auto in Ferguson Falls has a bid for a half ton electric pickup. Otherwise, all of their bids are for three quarter and one ton pickups. So.
So this is the only bid that's come out since the last time we talked about it?
This is the state procurement, so these, these are, these are through the state system, through office management. So those are, those are the bids that are available through the state.
So in the past year, that's all that's come out of these bids?
Well, there used to be like a Chevy dealership on a Bismarck, and they would bid, and they would have different, you know, half ton pickups, different things. But since COVID, most of them, I think a lot of it has to do with availability of vehicles, most of them are. They're so hard to get vehicles that they're not tying them into these lower bids, they're just. You know, they don't want, they don't want a bid to give the pickup away, they're, they're, they, they can sell them without having to worry about getting the government vibes.
Where, where are you getting your vehicles from?
Through the state bid process.
The same Nelson, Nelson Auto?
Last people we got through Nelson Ford and Ferguson Falls.
Ferguson Falls, yeah.
They're the ones that had the, the bid for the Ford explores. Um, I've gotten all my vehicles through the process.
What about the highway department, Jason, where do you get yours?
We haven't got any vehicles for a while, you know, where they were. So vehicles we're running actually were, are any down from yours, bro?
We had a couple of vehicles, I don't know if you still have them or not, but.
We have a lot of them.
The high, the highway department, yeah, and like my office, I mean, most of ours usually come from Kansas. Lawn enforcement was the state bid a lot of times, because they were buying specific law enforcement vehicles, which aren't incredibly available for every dealership over time. And then you wanted to go through state procurement, you know, you started to want, you started to want it to go through that. But there are no, there are no state bids for, you know, if I'm gonna buy a, you know, a half ton pickup, there is no state bid for a half ton pickup.
How often do they issue these bids?
I don't know how often they came, but I think they just did. When I call, when I called them, they said there is no bid, they haven't had a bid for a few years, and they probably won't have a bid.
For a half ton?
For a half ton, well, for, but that's, right now, that's, that's who's bidding, that, that is the only company that. For the last three or four years, there has not been a North Dakota company that has bid on the North Dakota. Or, or at least they haven't received a bid, I guess, I don't know if they've been, been receiving it, or are they?
But there were bids, the, um, earlier, there just isn't now, right? Because there, there were half ton pickups, but they're.
Well, there used to be, yeah, yeah, originally, when I tried to buy a pickup, the first time I tried to buy one, whenever that was four years ago. There were state bids for pickup.
So you're saying within this past year?
To have to buy one, just to keep what I have, but we didn't buy one out of that, that time.
But you're saying within this past year, there was never a bid for half ton pickup, a state bid?
No, there wasn't one, I looked last, because I, I, I came to you guys last year, there was no bid, and then you said just basically to keep my existing pickup for another year. There was no bid for a half ton pickup on the North Dakota state business.
Maybe you need to explain to me how this bid process works, I mean, does it just open up intermittently, or do you put it out there?
So every, every, well, it's usually, it's usually based on like a state agency, so like the Department of Transportation. Will want to put out a bid request to the state agency, and it'll end up on the state procurement, and they'll put it off for whatever they want. Now, I don't know, maybe the half, maybe the state highway partner doesn't buy half ton pickups anymore, but will buy three quarter and one ton pickups. So they're not asking for half ton. I, I don't know the, I mean, I don't know how all that.
Yeah, like Ron, what can you get through there? What have, what, what can you get through there for vehicles, or what have you?
What have, what have I gotten?
Yeah.
Um, I got Richie's half ton pickup through there, I've gotten all our Tahos at Nards Sports.
What did Richie and his people?
Uh, Richie's pickup is twenty twenty one. About twenty, twenty twenty or twenty twenty one, depends on when we got.
How about the Tahos?
Um. I have Tahos various years, um, my, my Tahoe is a twenty twenty and early. And we have some E teens, and we, um, I am going to ask for three more. Um, twenty twenty twos.
And you're planning? Yeah, time flight?
Yeah.
And you're planning to go through the state bid process?
Absolutely, yeah.
What is that, about the state bid, or is that kind of a state? You have a bond and say bond.
I'm actually going to, um, the state bid process, and, um, the vehicles will be coming from Iowa. Um, the, there are, there are. Um, entities that just sell government, the government, um, and will do. State bid bids through their dealerships.
Yeah, I guess, I just assume you stay in that state bid deal. And do it that way, maybe start going out of the system for you, then we're just gonna open this whole thing up.
I guess I agree, I, I think all our vehicles should be coming through the state bid, why would we only have one department coming through the state bid and not others?
Yeah, well, I guess, so I guess I'm, I just, I gotta, I need to know what exactly I'm supposed to do, because. My understanding at the time was the state bid was that state procurement was combined off the, there is not a half ton pickup on that list. So I don't know where, even, even he's buying, you bought Richie's pickup, he's holding off of the Minnesota.
I asked Bruce Paul, or, uh, somebody in St. Paul about that.
Correct.
But they all go through the state bid process, it's a state, it's a state, it might not be the North Dakota state bid. But it is a state bid through Minnesota, um, it, it is the same process that they use.
So is it based off of some standard specs, or is it based off of your specs?
No, it's based off of standard specs.
Standard specs in Minnesota, well, or wherever you're out before you're in. From Iowa, so this is Iowa specs.
Yes.
Correct, not that it makes, I mean, that, that doesn't make any. But I still, I, I guess I still have issues with why we don't support our local businesses, but.
I know, but it's, state bid is state bid, we gotta, I just assume have them all come out of hands and sue, but they don't want to do business out there.
And we are using, I mean, it's taxpayers' dollars, it's, I don't think it's, we have to be careful with our taxpayer dollars. And I don't think we should be saying, well, we're gonna make the sheriff's department or the highway department do state bid, but we're going to allow you to go through Hanson's. I think we have to be uniform.
That's fine, I'm just trying to define what a state bid is.
Well, check out.
If I'm calling to Iowa and saying, well, what is your state bid for your state? That is not hard to go to state bid.
Well, if that's what you have to do to get a cheaper vehicle and, and buy. Check it out, see, I mean, if it's Minnesota or Iowa or whatever.
It is comparable to the North Dakota state bid, there, there are only so many vehicles out there. So, um, it, so the, i- i- if North Dakota doesn't have a bid. There are other places that will have a bid that use the state bid process, it might be the state bid out of Iowa. Or, or Minnesota or South Dakota. But it does incorporate the, the state bid process, it, it, it is, it, when it comes down to it, it's just the. What equipment is going to be in there that, that, that are bidding, so as long as the equipment. Is in that, those vehicles that I want, that will work for us. Um. I, and, and the price is for the state bid process of, that's comparable to North Dakota. To me, it is part of the state bid process.
I'll check it out, see if you can find something cheaper on another state, I guess.
Uh, I have a couple, um, numbers and people that I can reach out to to see what there is out there. It might not be that there is any available now, but, um, there might be some coming this summer or, or, or fall. That, that, uh. I can, I can reach out to you, Brent.
Do you have money for it, your account, or?
Well, yeah, we bought it from them.
I think with the microchip, I mean, it even says on the back of this bid, you know, we don't have the ability to be. To, there's just, like you said, there's not a lot out there, so if you can work, you know, together in terms of finding. Being a little creative right now with the, just where we're at, it's, let's save taxpayer dollars, I think that's.
Yeah.
The best route right now.
Sorry, I mean, yeah, I mean, I guess I'm just trying to quantify what, what is considered a state bid.
Where we can get it the cheapest?
Well, so Hanson puts in a bid that's cheaper than anybody else, that's all, that is a state bid.
I guess, if you, if you have a, if you have a bid that from Hanson's that comes in cheaper than the state bid, we'd look at it.
I mean, they can build and do whatever, you know, I don't, I don't know where it's going to bear.
My, my, my thought is, is if it's coming on a state bid, it's going to be free bare bones, and it's going to be cheaper.
If you buy one in Iowa, then you gotta pay either somebody to go down and get it, or pay that to ship it upstairs.
Well, whatever, just check it out and see, I mean, check out those other bids that Ron has access to.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, I'd say work with Ron, sounds like he's got the experience on it, and. I, I guess I just feel all our vehicles should be coming from the same place, then it.
Same process.
Same process, yeah, not necessarily the same place, but same process, they're all county vehicles.
All right.
Um, so last item I had in the business, I just, I didn't know what to call it, but it is department priorities, private. Yes, I'm looking for, I don't know what I'm looking for, but I'm looking for some. Help or guidance on how to manage some of the things going on in the office at the moment, right now would. Um, Crystal is spending a lot of her time trying to get this I am responding app up with all the responders. Some of the departments are pretty good, some of them are a little bit longer to get them to get it to everybody, get it incorporated. Um, if we go with any of this emergency medical dispatching stuff, that requires a program manager that has some other duties, some responsibilities. Um, you know, verify and certify that they're, over two years, they have to have so many hours of trainings, we need somebody who's tracking all that, keeping track of all that. Um, we're spending a lot of time right now on this Cyren project, fleet mapping, trying to get all of these. Figure out what radio channels we're asking for, how all these channels are going to be distributed to the various responders in the county. How they're gonna display and dispatch, how we're gonna record them, what we're going to record, there's just a thousand things going on with this. Cyren and fleet mapping at the moment. Um, we've got other programs, um, there are dispatchers who do their program called Rapid SOS. And dispatch, it's a free program, but there's a multitude of add-ons that you can put into it that are, and several of them are also free. But it requires somebody to time to research them, figure out how to incorporate them. And if we do incorporate them, how we're going to use them, and what the policy procedures are going to be for using some of those add-on resources. Um, my local emergency management plan, and hazmat plan, and resource list should all be done through again and updated. Um, changed out, we've, we've updated our resource list as far as the resources we have, but there's new resources out there that we probably haven't identified yet. But we should just really sit down and handle through that process again. Um, a couple of years, we're gonna have to start on our multi-headed mitigation plan, and they've just added a whole realm of new criteria. Um, the last time we did it, it was about a seven month process. Um, this will probably take longer again, so it's due in about two years, so we'll probably have to start in a year from now to start updating that whole plan again. Um, the county really should have a continuity of government or continuity operation plan that could be written. Been on my list for five years, I just never get to starting it. So I'm just, I have, I have, um. I've got a couple of dispatchers that have been doing a lot of my training and scheduling, Crystal has done a lot of extra stuff for me. But none of them are, you know. Technically responsible for any of this, and I can't keep up with any of this, and I don't know how much more I can dump on any of them. So I guess I'm just trying to figure out, you know, where is, you know. The priority, what, you know, like, do you guys care if there's a continuity operation plan ever, or is that just getting pushed to the bottom of the pile? Right now, my priority is the, the fleet mapping and the emergency medical dispatching card, we have to figure out something there. Because I can't just start tomorrow using any part of it. So it's gonna be, you know, six months down the road before we start using all that. But that's, that's something else that's gonna take somebody a whole lot of time to go through, meeting with ambulants, hospitals, doctors, the dispatchers. Trying to sort all of that stuff out.
Well, I don't know, I'd expect us to make that call.
I'm just looking for, I mean, I guess I'm not looking for you to make that call, I'm just looking for some. Whether somebody wants to come and visit with me to help identify what the priorities are. And I have what I think are the priorities, but maybe they're not everybody else's priorities.
Mister Chairman?
Yes?
Um, I'm wondering, um, who did these duties in the past, Brent?
Well, in the past, we didn't have fleet mapping or Cyren or Rapid SOS or I am responding. Um, the E M D cards were done a long time ago. And it's, it's just been both emergency management and nine one one continue to add more and more responsibility. And, and everything's becoming a computer application, where it requires somebody to implement it, manage it, and train everybody all the ways. Before, you know, the dispatch center was one computer screen, a radio, and a phone. You know, now they have whatever, one, two, three, four, five, six, six computer screens. Of them, we're running five or six different applications. And somebody has to make sure that you're, and it's all computer driven and software driven, it requires updates, management, bug fixes. And those are stuff that we, you know, those weren't on the plate before.
Mister Chairman, can I continue?
Yeah.
I, I agree with you, Mister Chairman, I don't know how we can prioritize, I would say. Sit down with Crystal, figure it out, and prioritize and, and start working on it, and see what can get done. I, I mean, I wouldn't be able to go in and, and say, well, you do this first, you do this first, because I have no idea even what these programs are.
Well, that was good.
I mean, from a health perspective, you know, as being a health provider, I, I think Brent is not, you know, I, I agree, like, this. The times have changed a lot, um, when you talk about like the, uh, Rapid SOS and some of these apps. And the thing, you know, my question is, is are there things that, that maybe do more and, and you don't have to do all of them? You know, because there's something that can accomplish, or, or getting that new software, would that help your eliminator? Is some of this stuff all necessary?
I mean, and, I think, you know, I think like the new A V software will help the dispatchers for their processes. It will also add a layer of supervisory responsibility and management responsibility. And I have no supervisor, dispatch supervisors, I have no, you know, technical assistants, I have an administrative assistant, and I have dispatchers. But ultimately, it falls on me, and I can't manage, I can't manage all of that anymore. So, I mean, Crystal and the dispatchers have been great to take some things on their shoulders and do some of those things, but I'm. I'm to the point where I don't know that I can add any more to that either, I mean, Crystal still has to be my administrative assistant to get the, the bills and the financing. And all of those administrative things that I require her to do. And I've had her work with this I am responding app, because it's a phone app, and she's more into phone apps and that stuff than I am. So it's, you know, more within her niche, but. That has taken a lot of time, a lot more time than I thought it was gonna take.
Okay, but like the I am responding, once you get that up and running, that'll be kind of, it's replacing another system, correct? So it won't be an addition, I get that it's an addition now to learn it, to train. So it won't be an addition. I get that it's an addition now to learn it, to train, but once you get it up and running, that's what.
For them, and then the goal is eventually that some of those agencies will be able to do it some of their self, but.
Right.
The one thing that the I am responding provides is it provides a whole new realm of way of communicating with responders, so. Within the app itself, there's a map. So if we go in there and build all the road closures, when the roads close during flooding or whatever, that will automatically show up at home when they get those. But somebody on our end has to be able to do all that. You know, and decide if that's what we're doing or if we're not going to do that, then, because you can't just say, well, today we're going to do it, tomorrow we're not going to do it. You know, I mean, you can go in, you know, we have digital mapping for all of our 911 stuff and stuff, and in reality, that whole digital map should be gone through because it was all local at one time. And then for 911, the state started implementing a statewide map. It all got turned over to the state. And a lot of our minimal maintenance roads that have been out of the system. So I've slowly been trying to go through each township, trying to figure out which roads need to be added back into the system. And there's still, there, you know, there's minimal maintenance, but for a farming accident or something, we still want to know what those minimum maintenance roads are. You're not going to drive it in January, but, you know, in the summertime, we might drive it.
Are you, I'm sorry. Is there any of the off-duty dispatchers that can come in and help out with this?
Well, well, when they, they come in and work, then they're not off. They're working, they're, they're already working forty hours a week.
But I mean, if you have to pay them extra to come in, if you've got to get caught up on this.
You have to pay overtime.
You have to pay overtime, whatever.
Well, and then, and last, I guess, it's like, if I could get you to allow me to have a couple of my supervisors and then I would give them some more of the responsibility.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I, I.
And I'm not, I'm not trying to create a fight. I'm trying, I'm just trying to say that it's, I mean, it is.
But be careful, be careful how you word it then, because you just came in here and asked for help prioritizing the duties.
Right, well, that's, but I'm.
And you're saying, now you're saying, well, if we would have let you make them leave dispatchers, then they would have the time, but they don't have the time.
I don't know that they have the time either, but it's, I don't, the, the problem is that I don't know that I shouldn't, I don't know that I want to, uh, how to say that. I don't know that I should assign any more duties to them either.
I believe they should be assigned duties. If they have the time to complete the duties, then I believe the duty should be assigned to them.
Mr. Chairman, um, are you, do you feel the dispatchers, like, when you're talking about some of these, uh, you're, you're discussing apps, you're, you know, are you looking for someone that is more of an IT assistant? Do the dispatchers have the ability to do these things? Do they have the capabilities and the knowledge? You talk about Crystal, that the apps are a little bit more in her realm. Are, are all of your staff capable of being able to do these?
And, and, and I would say not, not to the extent that needs to be, I mean, I mean, you did, not, not to set up the apps and to investigate the apps, but once they're there, once you learn, when, you know, they can, you get one trained, they can train everybody else on these. You know, I mean, we've got that before, you know, I mean, they do, I mean, like I said, I've got two of them sometimes free. I hope they do all of the training for, you know.
I mean, that's my understanding that there is downtime in dispatch at times. So do you feel that they could take on some additional duties?
It's, it's hard to, the, the problem with additional duties in dispatch is when I say that, you know, I'd like you guys to do that and have it done by the end of the week. That'll be the week from hell, but I have something to do.
But then maybe you just have to adjust that. You're, you're able to tell if they have a really busy week in dispatch, correct? You, you're able to tell if they have a really busy week in dispatch, correct? I mean, you could tell by the number of calls and.
Oh, yeah, right, right.
Yeah, so I mean, I think you just have to adjust accordingly, and I guess I feel as, as the department, you're the, you're the manager of that department. I think you need to decide how you're going to manage it. And if there is a specific topic, like you said, this, I don't really remember what you called it now, um. Fleet mapping? No, not fleet mapping. The one you haven't even started for the county.
Well, the emergency medical dispatch?
No.
Continuity operation.
There, continuity of operation, you need to wrap a lot of things. I mean, if you feel like that's something that should be a priority that you're not getting to, obviously, it's not too much of a priority if we haven't had one for five years or however many years.
Well, that's why I'm trying to decide how you'd like, I mean, to go through and try to identify some of those things, but something, you know.
I think you, as a supervisor, the department head, you have to decide the priorities. I mean, it's the. You're, you're the one who's responsible, so if something that doesn't get done that should have, and you, you've chosen not, not to be a priority, you're going to have to let us know why, I guess, but.
Well, everything that needs to be done is getting done. It's just, there are, you know, when I first started this, I spent a lot of time being able to go into the school and do some stuff. I don't do that anymore. I don't have time to go into the school. You know, I don't, if they call and ask me for something, I go, but I don't hold it. Because I don't, I just don't have time to set up programs and do what that is best, multiple days with, you know, a bunch of elementary kids, telling them about 911 and emergency management.
Which is.
As much as I'd like to do that, I think that's a valuable thing to do, but I, I just, that's one of the things that's just kind of gotten split off to the side because it, it isn't something that's essential to be in, in place.
Well, if you're looking for a suggestion, my suggestion would be that you delegate some of the work to your employees, um, your dispatchers. I understand Crystal's plate is full, but I would delegate to your dispatchers, and if you give them a deadline to do it by, you're going to have to monitor that if you feel they can accomplish it or not based on the number of calls. I think that's your best avenue right now is to try to delegate some of those jobs.
Prioritize.
Right, and then you prioritize the rest.
Alright, anything else?
No.
Heidi? Thanks, Brent.
Thank you. Well, I've got some exciting news to, uh, share with y'all. So I'm glad to be here tonight. Thank you for having me. You can see, well, first of all, Heidi Johnson, both of you have, have a, we are a total owner of I A C Associates, and you have substance use disorder treatment program and mental health treatment program in place at the county correction.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Can you have Heidi speak up just a little bit more? Sorry.
Oh, that's alright. I'll just join the hour.
Thanks, Heidi.
Sure, not a problem. Um, so we've almost been doing this program for a year now, and, yeah, I know, isn't that amazing? But it's, it was really, um, it, it really warmed my heart to see the increase in the number of people that are participating in our program and the number of hours that we're putting in for participation. You can see at the very top of the data that we've collected that from August to December, we were putting in an average of a little bit over eighteen hours of treatment per week. And the weekly average of participants in our programs were about six, six people per week, which is almost fifty percent of the average week of inmates that were incarcerated per week. So we've gone up significantly in our participation. And, and in fact, in one of the weeks, we only had three people at work participating, and there was a census of fifteen. So it's like, yeah, come on. The, the comments that we're getting in the post, the post reports that we're having participants complete indicate that they are learning things and actually over the course of the Christmas break, when the interns were gone, I was seeing inmates myself and talked to several of them, and many of them actually brought up things that they had already learned. And they were saying, hey, yeah, no, this sounds like this. Like, yeah, it does, yay. And so again, cross disciplines also. People who were involved both in the substance use disorder treatment and the mental health treatment were, uh, able to say, yes, and I learned this in the substance use treatment, um, programming, and it's the same thing that I'm hearing here from the counselors too, with being reinforced. And every single one of them on the post reporting said, again, one hundred percent, yes, this is going to help me stay sort of, um, out of the, the jail system. This is, this is a positive experience for me. I don't know honestly that I've ever seen one hundred percent on that sort of a question. Where I think we, we're trying our best to connect with the inmates and move forward and get people involved and keep them involved. You can see underneath the data collection from the very top, there's evaluations that have been completed and sort of what the disposition was after, when people were, um, either released or what they're, sort of, where, where they're at. There's been only one person who did not remain in program. And, and that happened, but there's just some people that dropped out. So, yes, in this time period, we've had, you know, three hundred and eighty total treatment hours. We've expanded to include mental health, uh, psychological testing also. So for some inmates who have had some, um, different issues going on, and we're not quite sure what's impacting their ability to function, that sort of thing, to help them not only with treatment program, but once they get out of the system to have some things to take with them, like is it going to vocational rehabilitation or someplace like that? So that they can kind of know what their limitations are also, what their strengths and areas of concern are. So the new things that we've done is, uh, I came up here actually and provided an in-person educational seminar on suicidal, or suicide prevention for the correctional officers of Tulsa County Correctional Center. I've said that a couple of times, and we, I think, have, had really good group interaction and learned a lot about suicide prevention. We've put together a PowerPoint presentation that I sent to Adam that should be, um, able to be uploaded to the electronic devices that the inmates use, so that they can click on it, they get a little entertainment, some, and some PowerPoint, but talk about, um, what is therapy anyway? But, you know, a little fun thing for them to maybe get invested in therapy. We've been asked to provide some therapy services for staff, and all of the referrals have been, um, have, have been included quickly, um, like at the last time. Uh, the typical wait period we use in high-strength now is, um, anywhere between three and six months. So we've made, because of our contract with you all, we've made it a priority to make sure that people receive really timely health, healthcare. We brought up books and games for inmates. A lot of the books are on self-help sorts of things and things that they can work on, keep themselves busy, um, and, and give them just information too about what mental health treatment and substance use treatment is. We also have a counselor who's coming to do in-person group sessions every other Friday now. So we typically do things over the internet, but we have somebody who's coming up every other Friday, and we also have another person who just started at A G C who's interested in coming up also. And not only are we thinking about being able to provide services at the County Correctional Center that I've been talking with, and, and the Health District about perhaps being able to find a location to do health, mental health treatment, substance use disorder treatment after they're released, but before they get transportation unknown. So you could hear in Tulsa County have a presence, an actual physical presence after the inmates are. And as I already said, psychological evaluations and with inmate permission. We're still trying to increase the number of participants. We, I think, come a long way in that, and, but we, we haven't peaked out, so we can still keep on trying. Continuing to work with the inmates upon release. Several of them have actually come to A G C, and we have, we were just talking about it today during our substance use disorder meeting about how to make sure that inmates who perhaps don't have transportation yet can still receive services through telehealth, even if they're on the S U D, um, voucher, which does not allow for them to receive telehealth services in group settings. It doesn't reimburse that, so we're, because we have a new provider, we're, we're going to be able to provide individual sessions for them much more frequently, so they can get, uh, maintenance therapy that they need until they can get into a group session. So, yeah, we've done our videos and our virtual brochures. We have put together packets of information that Joel so graciously brings over to the Correctional Center so that the inmates have, um, things that they can do between sessions, and they have an actual packet of information that they can work on, that's gone through in therapy sessions, so they understand it and they can continue to do the work that they want to work on in between times that we get together. One of the big things that we've done too that, and, as I think is helpful, is that we've streamlined the intake process. It used to be a lot of faxing paper and pencil kinds of things, and Joel has now a laptop and we've transferred everything into PDFs, and she can upload it to a portal that we, that we have for our health record, and then our office manager goes into the portal, retrieves the records, and then we can immediately get that person scheduled in. So there's no, it, it's really, like, it's, it's helpful. Also, uh, we have, uh, one of our counselors at A G C can sit with, and they actually type in the, um, information as they talk to them over the internet, and when he gives that information, then that makes it on his P D F. Um, barriers really haven't changed all that much. We still have some limited staffing, but I think, you know, we really connected a lot more and, um, that sort of managed itself. We're, again, limited available hours for alternative group times due to visitation and lunch, but, uh, again, we're going to be booking out, expanding that, given that we have another L A C onboard and seeing if maybe there's some more individual sessions and or maybe smaller group times that we could have that people could participate in, even if they do have somebody coming in for visitation, they could maybe have a half hour visitation and still join. And one of the problems that we have run into is that group typically starts at nine o'clock, and sometimes it's hard for people to get to that nine o'clock. Get up, get going, get ready, be there. And so we're hoping that maybe we can have some shorter afternoon sessions, that people might be more able to pretend. There have been a little bit of telehealth issues. The hours is, we've gone through a couple of computers, but, you know, it's all good. You got it all figured out. On the last page, there's the successes that increase in the weekly treatment hours and weekly participation. There's those small, short week time. The inmates continue to voice their appreciation for programming and providing from treatment, and like I said, that really was evident when I was seeing these people myself, and I, I hear from the people that are my interns what is being said, but to actually witness it and hear it and, and hear the actual terms and know, aha, I know they have learned that from our people. It's really nice. And the psychological testing also, um, that we've completed and still have on deck to do that. I have, just, just so you know, that I, I've reached out to the governor's office myself, because I know that we're, you know, when we come to the end of this, that we're going to, and so I'm, I'm really cheering us on. I really am. Um, I've, I've spoken with several people at the governor's office and I plan to connect with a couple more people there and continue to, um, really strengthen the program. Jonathan Holt, the, um, managing director of Office of Recovery, they invented. I recently had a, a get-together with him and really, again, went over what we're doing here while showing how significant it is. And he said, well, don't they do that in business? I said, no, they don't. He said, well, I know they want to do that in business. I said, wow, yeah, these people up at Tulsa County have figured out how to do this. And, and then he, he's like, they haven't. And then he's like, they haven't at Bismarck? Is it possible they haven't announced us for any info? He's just like, oh, okay. So we had a really nice chat, but I think that part of it is, is getting the word out there and letting people know what we're doing here. And that every single person who's gone through treatment, who's left and filled out this questionnaire, says that they believe that treatment is going to help them in their life. And help them stay out of this. Which was our goal, sir. Now, was there a guarantee that that's going to happen? No, but at least for me. They're voicing every single one.
Mr. Chairman? I want to make sure that you connect with me if you come out to Bismarck, Heidi. I'm on movement service committee.
Super.
So.
When is this to end or do? We've got two more years. And I think, I think we're going to gain pressure. I think we're going to really make, my, my hope is that the people that we've seen already, we're going to see less of them in the years to come.
That was our goal, our main goal. So we allocated, was it six hundred dollars? I can't remember them all. We allocated, no, it's one thousand a year for three years?
And I really, I thank you, I really do think that your decisions with the fund has been positively impacted people by.
Did you say you had another LAC come onboard?
We do, we have two actually. Erin Lunskey, she is primarily in charge of our adolescent programs. We're actually unionizing adolescent programs going in Grantworth.
What's her name?
Erin Lunskey, it used to be Erin West.
Okay.
On the bill and she joined us. And our other new L M A C, so she's a licensed master addiction counselor, is Marla Fisher. And she is really gung ho about being up here also. Pesticized to death and wants to be helpful. This is really, really charismatic. She's very, very good. I think she connects really well with different.
Good to hear.
Yeah. I don't for Heidi, but I would like to hear from Ron or Adam, Alan, any of you, how you feel it's going? What are you seeing on your end? Joel?
I think I have no complaints. You know, Joel really is on the front lines with Heidi and all of this. But I was going to say, I was really happy to hear that you have reached out to Jonathan, because I know that he also is on that committee for the mayor. That the governor for on public health dollars. And certainly, I think this falls right in line with what those money is going to be for as well.
I'm going to follow up with them.
What else was my just?
I mean, we definitely, we spent kind of just even better, I was even more out, you see different programs, we wanted really good effort. And then he spread that, he kept asking, but he should try to, like at a point we had pretty much almost on a tag, he was there two or three networks. I was good, I think it was just the word of mouth, of course, never anything kind of hurting each other, which I thought was great because he knew a lot of times in correction. I think that all happened, there was conflict between, but I think it was a really good environment. Establishment of this program as it goes and as it continues to keep the number of people in PowerPoint, I think it's really growing and I have to and I miss when I get transferred to this guy, you know, and it's really tough sometimes to go halfway, like they're all only going halfway. But sometimes they aren't there, I think it's really different. They're able to do a lot of sort of support things, a lot of the requirements of evaluation. And they're able to at least get
I've seen someone who was programmed out at first, I mean, a lot of it. But I had one, we had recently, we went off to the other, postponed his child till he can finish the program. So he can, he can finish up whatever he had, because he said he wouldn't be able to go with it. Me seeing that person just the whole time I'm in here, I would have never seen the same person with the change in him. It's just like traumatic. I've seen a couple of them, they're like, ah, I just want, I want to continue it, but I don't know if I can. I'm going to this county and if they don't have it, so what am I going to do? Let's take pick words with you. I mean, you still have to take words, keep in touch with them, try to keep up with them. And that's basically all they have to do. They're like, if they leave us and they don't continue this time, that's all I have to do, that we're all doing it right now.
But a huge feather in our cap to have a program like this. I know the D L C R, our last inspection said, you have a program like that in your jail? So it is a huge commitment on the county's part to get this going. We have to realize that a hundred percent of our inmates are going to get out. And so we want them to be better after they, they go to treatment and I do, I, I don't want them to sit back there and think of ways to commit more crimes. I want them to get the help they need. And Kelly called to Adam's point, said, I've never seen anybody want to spend more time in jail. That person could have filled out our jail, but he delayed his leaving so he could finish the treatment that he was going through. That never happened. A couple of weeks, I didn't see him. So it is a huge thing and I'm so proud that it's in our jail. I think you guys should be too. It's a huge thing.
It's good to hear.
Very good. Need to get that word to Bismarck. I wonder who could do that for us?
I, I will with Heidi, that's for sure.
Thank you very much. Good to hear.
Heidi, I think you should reach out to the day around people at the D L C R and just let them know about that program too. They want to know our success stories, so maybe you can reach out to them.
Absolutely.
So can that be some days?
Yeah, that would be great.
Thanks a lot, Freddie.
Thanks, Heidi.
I'll take a five minute break.
I wonder, it might be early, but I wonder if they've noticed a difference yet just.
Danny? I'm going to check out.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
So you don't need your, your sleeve or you do?
Brownies are delicious, by the way.
Yeah, you know, these people that were touching with our program go home, yes, expose other people. Hopefully they have the fortitude to withstand the peer pressure to not slip out of the program.
We've never, we're a small jail, right? We've never had the, the resources before to help. There's, there's no, so limited services for somebody in Walsh County. So have a, a program like this is huge for.
Well, like I said, I've always believed that if you personally invest in growth in someone, you will benefit them for life. Because they're going to be better and I bet you're feeling better. It's easy, you know, they're getting, they get along and group and.
I think our inmate, inmate fights are down, our inmate, the staff is down. People are just half-bearied and it's a hard time down there, right? You're locked up twenty-four seven. It is not a great climate. So if you can have something for them to work for, that's huge.
Well, I'm just thinking about this jail meeting before, I mean, we're going to have something to talk about at some point. It's four years away, hopefully not, but, but if you could benefit that many counties, I mean, you just think, oh, if we could keep that programming and growing. They don't have the ability to do that. I mean, our county's small, but you look at all the others, what a beautiful blessing it is for them to want to, you know, to work with us.
And if we can make that work in, in our jail. With the basement patients, we're putting them in the garage, we're putting them in cells. You know, if we had more room, what, what more could we do? So it, it is, I think it's a great program. I think we are, we should be proud of that program.
Yeah.
We are, yeah.
I think it was two hundred times more a year.
Yeah.
It's a huge commitment.
But where can we reach people? I mean, you put it out there and say, hey, if you're an addict, if you need help, please get a come.
Otherwise, we're just warehouse, right? We're, we're keeping them with no programs, not, we're not making them any better. We're, if nothing else, we're making them worse. We're so this, something for them to work for, for their family, for their, for our community.
Oh, we'll call a meeting back to order with Ron Murgens.
The first thing I'd like to start off with is the estimate for the car repair. That's the lights repair estimate where we had that transmission go down in one of our Tahtos. And that's to replace the transmission. Any questions about that?
Is that in your budget?
Yes. Not too many of those, but yes, this one will.
You had another vehicle with a bent bell?
Yes, that, that is a city of Fort River vehicle, but I believe that's going to be under warranty. So I've had a fair amount of vehicle trouble the last month or so. We had, took a brand new car that we just got. All the transmission fluid drained out of it, one of the lines cracked. And pretty much just smelt on the front end and we did pay for a record and take it down the lydia. But luckily that's under warranty. It, it is, I think, a problem. They're pumping out cars at a rapid rate and the quality just isn't there. But this vehicle is not under warranty. The lights repair one. So we replaced the transmission at six thousand sixty-two dollars. If you're looking for a motion to approve the repair of that vehicle.
Motion to approve the repair. What was the total?
Six thousand sixty-two dollars.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Your second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? I will call for the vote, Karen?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Christie?
Yeah.
Myself, yes, motion carried.
Next thing is the Rowlett County jail agreement. And then you had put that up by your computer there. Rowlett County is asking for us to sign an agreement with Kelly Cole to make some additions and revisions to the contract. And that is the contract after she's approved it. Their, the rate for us, Rowlett County is going to be eighty-five dollars if we don't sign the contract. It's going to be a hundred and ten dollars. So I think it would make sense for us to sign that contract.
This is basically as needed?
That is where we had, so our overfalls where we have taken females in the past. So yes, it is as needed, yes.
Is there a motion to sign the agreement?
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
We moved the second. Any further discussion? Now we'll call for the vote, Christie?
Yeah.
Amy?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Oh, yes, motion carried.
The next thing is the budget amendment for the sheriff's office. Went over my budget, eighteen thousand seven hundred and seven dollars and forty-seven cents. In tribute, that to the increase in gas and car expenses. My gas, I'm over by twenty-one thousand in gas and capital all day, just the increase in vehicles. And the increase in the equipping those vehicles, I'm over by twenty-two thousand in capital all day. We've taken that into account for the twenty twenty-three budget and I hope not to go over my budget in twenty twenty-three.
Well, you can't help that the gas prices increased.
You don't have that in your budget?
Right.
So where do we get it out of? Any ideas? Okay. The, we need a motion to approve the amendment. Take the money out of county general. Your second?
I'll sec, oh, go ahead, Amy.
Any further discussion? Now we'll call for the vote, Amy.
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carried.
And the next thing is purchase three Chevy Tahtos. When Carl Chevrolet in Des Moines, Iowa. Little background, the reason that I made it to Iowa is that when the Tahtos went out for bid. Chevy gave them two weeks to open the bid for Tahtos. In fifteen minutes, they had, they closed it because they had more bids than vehicles available. Carl Chevrolet in Des Moines made it, purchased more than they, they needed. So through my contact in Minnesota, he referred me to Iowa. And that's how I found these vehicles. It is, if you look at it, forty-one thousand nine hundred and seven dollars per vehicle.
Mr. Chairman, Ron, can you can you say that again? What, for each vehicle?
Yeah, yes, forty-one thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars per vehicle.
Okay, wow, that's a good price.
From the cost, you know, not that many years ago, I was buying Explorers for twenty-four thousand dollars. Um, the price of vehicles has gone up dramatically, which, um, I think everything's gone up. But um, this is, this is a, um, I I think it is comparable to the bids that that would have been if we could have gotten in and held it for. Um, it is, I think, a good price for those vehicles. And they are, um, police equipped vehicles that that we we need to replace the vehicles we have. So I would ask for a motion to allow me to purchase those three vehicles.
Do you budget it for this?
I am.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to make that motion that Ron purchased those three vehicles.
Karen, is motion, your second?
I'll second.
Further discussion? Are we trading in something then?
No, state bids, you do not trade in.
Don't try it.
But um, there is a used car market. Um, I've sold some to an ambulance company in Minnesota. Um, there are, there are several avenues on where we can, um, get rid of vehicles. Because that I've got a good relationship with an ambulance company and they want Pajos and and Expeditions to use for the paramedic vehicles. So I I do know that we can get rid of some of those vehicles.
We're replacing three then?
We are.
Yeah.
With, we are replacing two, but we're adding those two positions. So this is, this is a new vehicle in addition to the other two that we we have quickly replaced.
All right, any further discussion? Now we'll call for the vote, Christie?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
So, yes, motion carried.
Um, just an update on on my department of our bits, or excuse me, um, the. Application process goes through tomorrow for administrative assistant. We have six or so applicants, um, for that position. So, um, we will, I'll be in contact with Panya and set up, um, some interviews for that. Um, in the jail, um, we we hired one of our employees who left to go to the mill. Um, she's back and started yesterday. Um, and Adam has two good applicants to hire for many future openings we have. We have one more opening, um, so it is looking good there, the the sheriff's office part. Um, I have not gotten a lot of all of the applicants for our deputy positions and keep working with that. That's all I have unless you have any questions for me. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ron.
First thing that I had on our agenda for this evening was the second roadside mine policy reading. So that we can update that and have it fully to sentry codes. Um, I believe I have to read the poll right there. I have to read the poll for an actual reading, I think so. Probably better. It is the duty of landowners or operators with land adjoining county roads as designated by the Walsh County Board of Commissioners. Cut all weeds and grasses along the county roads adjoining their lands, including weeds and grasses growing within the public right of way, or in county roads and their lands. The cutting shall be completed no later than September fifteenth each year as prescribed by the Walsh County Board of Commissioners. If the landowner or operator fails to cut the weeds and grasses along the designated highways or roads as provided in this policy. The Walsh County Board of Commissioners may cause the leaves and grasses to be cut and charged the actual cost of mowing. Shall be certified by the county auditor and all the expenses shall be charged against the land of the landowner. And shall become a part of the taxes to be levied against the land for the ensuing year. It shall be collected in the same manner as other real estate taxes are collected. All ditches must be mowed to a minimum of one bat wing mowing path along the roadway with a dead height of three inches at time and pass. This policy would be in accordance with the sentry code sixty-three oh five oh one and sixty-three dash oh five dash oh two. Um, so with that reading, um, we're looking for a motion that we accept this policy. So it can be enacted and put into use for next fall. Hopefully, never have to turn it up again.
Is there a motion to accept the, um, bowling policy?
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Jason, can I just clarify, just the sentence below, when it says set at December seventh, that is correct, the twenty-twenty-one, like that was the initial one?
That's the one, it was set the last time.
Okay.
So with this one, we had to add the all ditch, the height requirement, we're missing that from the last one. And it wasn't the previous policy. So I was contacted by a lawyer saying we're missing that part, which, but, but it missed that.
Okay.
So this should bring us in the full compliance.
Any further discussion? Now we'll call for the vote, Amy?
Yes.
Christie?
Yeah.
Karen?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carried.
Um, with that, I wanted to give you a quick update on the positions we have for the assistant bridge foreman. We only received three resumes, one internally, two ex- two externals came from Facebook. Knowledge has probably found out about the position. Um, we advertised with Jaws HQ, Grand Forks Herald, The Record, The Weekender, The Bedler. They had no hits from any of them, not one call for interest during the. Had a few other people that were reached out to us to meet through Facebook. Um, they decided not to apply for the position, I guess. But otherwise, really the only people we've heard from for that position were through Facebook. As for the open position with, uh, as a maintenance tech, our part-time position, we have had zero interest. Um, we had it in the draft record, The Weekender, no interest. We just put it out through Facebook again, haven't heard anything on it. Um, no calls, no interest, we put it on and indeed, no calls, no interest. So with that, Mickey has been putting in the extra time, getting things that we can get done, done. Um, something just have to wait, but I don't feel like we're, anything that she's missing is creating, anything else could be a problem to the public. She gets to it, just not as fast as she probably wants to, so, or to have it done. She's had a lot of work around, but she's doing well, but it's too much for one person to be taking care of all these positions. So hopefully, we get something, uh, for somebody to apply for these. Otherwise, I'm not sure what we'll have to do. That now we're fifteen dollars an hour at twenty hours, I don't know if we're going to need to spend it or what, get somebody to apply.
Mr. Chairman, um, I I don't have the name of him currently, but, um, there was a gentleman that that my husband's farm has actually hired. Um, and he's cleaning their office now after Bonnie's closed. I think, I don't know that you're familiar with, so he's cleaning, his wife helps. Um, I think he's from like Tanzania or something, but he, they've been very impressed with his cleaning. So I'm just saying from a perspective, is it something we outsource at some point to look at? If there are certain cleaning abilities that go above and beyond Mickey, this could be an option. I, I mean, they've been very impressed with what he, the quality of work. Um, you know, the honesty, they just have felt really good with what he's doing. So I could get that information, just so you have, I don't know how urgent or pertinent or, but that could be an option.
Yeah, if we do that, we'll have to go for a full bid, but I know the gentleman, you're speaking.
Oh, you do, after what?
Have to go up the bid. Again, one bid, so we'll put up one, I'll open up the bid, other teams, departments to be able to do it. Then we'd have to decide what you're going to go through, what you put in, what comes to the problem. Um.
Yeah, I just know from a perspective of the way that it is with employees now, outsourcing just has to become sort of, you know, you still have to start thinking.
Well, first, the past and brought into me.
Thank you.
I just got, um, the person you're referring to is John John?
Yeah.
And, um, then Bonnie's, but, um, was gone at the law enforcement center, we did solicit a bid to clean it and he was letting bid. And they offered not to go with that at the time and they decided they were gonna hire a part-time person, that's why we had the part-time person.
Okay.
Just a, just a quick hit.
Yeah.
At the time, Bonnie, we just, we just put her back off the bid, the only bid was Donald from Ken.
Well, I don't know how many else are out there.
Maybe more flexibility to go with a part-time person, maybe somebody that had a little bit of mechanical or.
Sure.
To do the basic repairs and stuff, I don't know, just when they came in.
Clean. Yeah. Certainly, I'm just saying options, you know, if it stays open.
I'm just throwing that little bit for you, for you.
Those are the plan days for the rehab, because we have our assistant bridge foreman. I'm hoping that, you know, then the day set up interviews and Monday, Tuesday being Monday, it's happening, the holidays. So tomorrow, my plan is the first thing is to do schedule with our three advocates for that. And we'll see how we see.
Yeah.
After that, I have a couple of budget amendments that I need to request being amended. Um, the first is from two thousand two forty-two, our loading bridge expenses. I went over budget by twenty-five thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty-one cents. That basically can be attributed to, uh, gas, oil, fuel, utilities, which was, the addables up within, uh, over twenty-eight thousand dollars.
And how much did you go for by, did you say?
Twenty-five thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty-one cents. So I'm looking for that budget to be amended from the general fund at six hundred and forty-four thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars and eighty-five cents.
Wait, no, what?
That's what, my budget was six hundred and eighteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two dollars and thirty-four cents. And that's what we went over by, is that we amended it to the six hundred and four thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars and eighty-five cents.
So this is your, are you giving us your total budget or just one?
That was the total from that portion of my budget, we have to like hold it.
You have separate, yeah, so you can't just rob, rob from one to secure the other.
Do a mom.
Okay, the other one that I have is for two thousand and five, four thousand and twelve, that's the county road expenses. That one is over twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents. Basically, I can attribute that to the same thing, gas, fuel. Um, I have those two budgets, the whole form of fuel, fueled over by fifty thousand dollars. Um, go through, the month of December, we went through over four thousand gallons of diesel fuel. So it's, with the diesel fuel rates that we have, um, we're on that one by twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents. So I've been looking to amend that budget from the two hundred and ninety-one thousand, five hundred to the three hundred and eighteen thousand, eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents.
What was that one called? You gave us the number, but what's it called?
County road expenses.
County road expenses.
So I would be looking for amendments to adjust for those.
No, only one?
No.
Oh, I think you said you had four.
I had four, but I only went over two, so.
Oh.
Or we have fuel levels, the first one went bad.
If that legislator, um, with what they've talked, the governor's talked about, is that only involving snow? Or would, um, some of that, the grants, Amy Karen knows, but with what's, what happened at the end of the year, none of that would benefit any of these, at least for this?
They're looking at snow and basically, it's good, it doesn't affect any of these, no. But it's gonna be, uh, very, very tough to get into there, get funding for those. Crazy, every township, every county is going to be going after that twenty. And it sounds like a lot of money, but we start looking at the lawn and townships and the problems they have, the people that don't have any money to the FEMA. Paying is not coming through yet from the flood to spring. It's going to be a war to try and get anything. I'm saying we're not gonna go after it if it gets approved, but it's gonna be very difficult to, you know.
Unless we just come out of general fund paper, no?
No, we're just, they're just, it's just on paper.
Oh, okay. All right, we have a motion to amend this budget.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Now we'll call for the vote, Christie?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carried.
I did think, feel like after doing that, I should bring up some minor expenses here. Uh, from April first to December thirtieth, I had, Stuart gave me a link of how many times he's used that computer.
Five thousand dollar computer scan.
The five thousand dollar computer scan, we used it over eighteen times this year and were things that he could repair without having to send them off. So to us, it's, we feel like it's paid for itself immensely. Um, or we can take care of those things ourselves in-house. And also it's giving us a history on trucks as to which ones will be our problem children in the future. There's one truck that's showing up more often than anybody else. So, but by being able to run that report, that is something that we'll be able to, we'll be able to track in the future when we're looking at equipment replacement schedules. So, and the other good news is the twenty-seventeen FEMA disaster number forty-three twenty-three, that paid for here at the time of COVID. So. Six years ago. That's all I had this evening. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Close equals money.
What's that?
Close then equals money.
It's close, they pay it off and we have money that we already spent, so have.
Yeah.
It's not something really getting to us last month, so.
No other questions for Jason? We won't, I'm finished with this one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
I think you all have a copy of the new, uh, revised portfolio list. I hope all my arrows and. All what everyone requested.
Yes, not, not this one, the next one, the budget thing.
Oh.
No, I learned this one, I see this one.
I I just have one question, I I don't remember, um, that I was gonna be on soils committee.
Would you like to be on soils committee?
Yeah, it's not really much of a committee anymore.
Isn't Bernie on it too, though? Or you need to?
I can take it if you don't want it.
Oh. I don't want it, you can have it.
That's fine.
Karen, were there any, were there any in there that you wanted me to take or or did that work?
No, that, those will, those will all be fine.
Okay.
I guess one thing I want to mention with these committees is I don't consider them sacred ground for, for poorly holders. If you see something wrong with mine, tell me.
I agree.
I think the more people that are looking at this stuff, the more people. I think the more people that are looking at this stuff, the more people involved, the better off we'll be.
I totally agree too, Danny. Oh, I, I do have another question, is that career builder is something new?
It is, that started last year, that's the scholarship fund that they have. And, uh, and Jill is the head of it, the JDA, they headed up. And she asked me to, um, serve on that board last year, so I'm on for a, it's a three-year term.
It is a board, okay, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, and it's a three-year term, so.
Mm-hmm. Looks good.
Anything else?
Yeah, I'm fine, I mean, I, I think I asked Chris this too, it's just now that they're finalized, then the word will get out, so I'll be notified for meetings, et cetera.
I'll just send this to all the department heads.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, so with the exception of removing Karen from the soils. Stay us down. I will send that out.
Miscellaneous budget amendments. Mm-hmm.
It's a very long sheet.
Yeah.
So I put this on paper because it's hard for me to take notes and write at the same time and I lose track, so. Um, you have a sheet before you, um. I'm actually, the treasurer's budget was overspent by six hundred and maybe six dollars, that was due to, um, paying Mel Debbie for vacation time after she retired. Um, utilities in county general. It's overspent by two thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine dollars and three cents. That's basically due to all the increases in utility costs. Oh. Then under county general miscellaneous, we overspent that budget by over, by two hundred and six thousand dollars, four fifty-three forty-five, because we paid two hundred thousand dollars out of there for the siding project, which emergency management is supposed to pay back over four years. Um. The snow miscellaneous county general was over by ten thousand, two ninety-five, that was due to a two thousand twenty-one bill being received in two thousand twenty-two. Our audit. Had to be reopened in two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty. Um, so there were additional charges for single audits as well as they've raised their prices. Health insurance, overspent by twenty-four thousand, eleven dollars, twenty-eight cents. Um, that had to do with switching to N B fifty, and then as we have new employees, we don't know if they're gonna take the insurance or not, so. A guessing game. And I told Brad I would take care of the extension office because we all know that that budget was overspent to the furnaces. So, basically, uh, county general as a whole was overspent by six point five two percent, but the county budget as a whole came in at ninety-nine point six one.
And that hundred percent included like Jason and everybody's.
Everybody's, the whole budget.
Basically, fuel prices.
So what happens when we go over like this?
Nothing, we have funds in there, so I mean, it's all.
We're fine, it just shows that we didn't budget quite as close as we had hoped to, I mean, and I know that's difficult.
Look for the, they look for the amendments at the end of the year, so it's more or less just paperwork to.
Look for some policy. To justify.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So.
Do we need a motion to approve the amendments?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All right, we'll call for both, Karen?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
I saw, yes, motion carried. Got some good news from Brad. He said there's about twenty thousand dollars in a pesticide fund. Sitting in N D S U, that is, um. His.
Hmm, nice.
To be able to spend on the extension office.
For like the repair, uh, the, releasing updates?
Yeah, he was gonna use it for repairing or updating of bathrooms and, uh, whatever he could, but he said there was twenty thousand that he was notified that considered that issue that they want him to use, so.
It's nice to find a pile of money like that.
The other way, yeah. And then, uh, got a call from the state about the audit and they said everything is fine and. Chris is a pleasure to work with and everything looks good.
So it's wrapped up now?
Two thousand twenty is complete.
Yeah.
Um, now that we just wrap up the two thousand twenty-one, they couldn't complete that until, but it's supposedly for the most part closely done.
Oh, good.
But it's been a long haul.
And so everyone worked good, so.
Good.
Anything else on that?
Christie, the department head meeting? Yeah, I had a couple things.
Yeah, that might do.
Yeah.
Okay. So, okay, so just, just a couple little updates from the department head meeting that was held on, I can't remember, January tenth, maybe, I'm not sure. Um, it was brought up about employee evaluations that just as a reminder, all portfolio holders have to be paper copy of the employee evaluations by January thirty-first, so that includes, I mean, well, that, that is us as commissioners, as well as the department heads. Um, we talked about that, um, the commissioners, anybody who's changing a portfolio, that maybe we should team up and do employee evaluations together, so like, for example, I'm taking over Brent's portfolio. Um, you were on his, I, I really can't evaluate them because I didn't have them last year, but we could team up and do it together. And that's what Ernie and I did last year.
Okay.
So the hard copy, the paper copy is due by January thirty-first and the face-to-face meeting is due by end of February. That was one thing, um, another issue that they talked about was Zoom, um, did we intend to just record our meetings? Or did we intend for the Zoom to be like a live for the public to watch? And I guess I wasn't sure, so when we talked about it at the meeting, did, did anybody else?
I thought it was bored.
Yeah, I wasn't sure. Um, I visited with Kelly Cole a little bit about that and like she said with Zoom, you don't want public to be able to just chime in. No, it would be for view, view only, if we went with public, it'd be view only. Or the other thing she said a little bit, if you, you know, did so that it wouldn't be, just so someone couldn't get on and, because I don't know that with Zoom, you can do just. I don't know either.
Well, with Zoom, you can't get on unless you're invited, so, right? So what's your?
No, I think they were talking that they thought they could set it up for the public, but they were wondering what, and I don't know, um, but what they were wondering is, you know, what was our intent? You know, were we just gonna do Zoom for these eight meetings while you're gone, are we going to continue to do Zoom every meeting?
I.
If we have other commissioners gone?
My intention is not to do Zoom for the rest of the meetings, um, but that it would, that it would be recorded, audio. That was the motion.
Okay. And then would we implement Zoom if we needed to for other commissioners, if they were going to be gone and put the, and are we gonna do a Zoom meeting for those meetings? Because that was some of the questions that came up.
Mm-hmm.
Well, we have the capability, if we have computers to do Zoom, it would just be a link, so. We can be able to use that, not feeling well, which is. Right, which was nice, oh, Ernie couldn't hear today, it was nice for him too, so.
I don't wanna see Ernie with what he's trying to.
Yeah. Okay, so, all right, so then that sounds like that settles then, it's just Zoom or?
Yep. Can I just say one thing? It is easier to do Zoom than the phone. Because, I mean, even though it was hard for me to hear tonight, a lot of the people, I didn't hear half of what Jason said. And then, um, even, um, Heidi, I, I was losing her, because she, she started louder and then she, and I just didn't wanna say anything. Um, but if, you know, if.
We're down here in the farmer's room.
Yeah.
Right, but if, but if we are in, in the commissioner's room, it is pretty easy for somebody to get on Zoom too, so, I don't know, I guess we could talk about it after we're done, after I'm done with my, you know, these meetings.
Do we, are we, we are recording via Zoom right now?
It says live transcription has been enabled, who can see this transcript, recording is on.
Okay, because if we're not gonna do Zoom, we're gonna have to figure out a different way then. A different method to recording, right? As it may.
Well, we do have that recorder upstairs, but, uh, I don't know how how that would then be put on our website or whatever.
Right, because right now they're just taking Zoom meeting, the recording and putting it on the website.
Well, that's the plan.
Okay.
I don't know that it went correctly at the last meeting, so I don't know if it was uploaded.
Okay. Okay. Well, then that kind of leads to the next question that came up at the department head meeting was, do we wanna purchase an owl for Zoom, um, like we use today? It's a little simpler method, it catches the whole room is my understanding, I, I don't know, what do you see Karen on your end? Can you see every?
Well, I, I, I see. I see you and Amy right now because, um, that must be where it's pointed, and I see Chris on it, on that smaller screen. Now, if I go to this whole screen, yeah, um, Todd is on, he's not showing. Chris is, Chris Moldy is on, um. I, I think we should.
Can you see Karen?
Pardon me?
Somebody's talking in the audience, what do you do now?
I, I can't understand what whoever said.
Pollard.
We'd need speakers, I think, normally.
Karen, can you see the whole room now?
No. Well, wait, I, I have it on, um, I'll switch to active speaker, um, I don't, I don't see the whole room now, no. I, the camera must be pointed towards certain people.
It should be, it should be following whoever's talking.
You know? It just, it says it is, switch to gallery view, it says it is, but let me, no. It, it was before, but, but then it was almost like somebody switched it to something else, so. I don't get that thing where it, it follows the speaker, I did before, but something got switched. Now, there is some owl thing up in that corner there. But, yeah, no.
And the benefit from the owl compared to, uh, when we're in our commission chambers, you know, if we have iPads or this, and then the speaker would be, this would pick up more, or? We don't have to mute and unmute, um, is my understanding, is that correct? You guys know way more about it than me, but my understanding was it's going to pick up the voice, so we don't have to be doing it on our own. Um.
Yeah, it should be following, so Christie's talking right now and, you know, we'll focus on her, or if somebody else here we're talking, we'll focus on that.
It just switched, it just switched to, to Ron and, um, Brent and, uh, that must be Jason back there. Way Jason. Yep.
That was the benefit of it, because like when we had our Zoom meeting two weeks ago, um, you, you had to manually, like, if, if someone was speaking, I had to manually go click on them to, to make them big on the screen, where the owl will just follow the voice and you'll be able to see, I think it's kind of a neat little feature, they said they thought they can purchase them for around a thousand dollars, but Chris, you had mentioned that we could even check with N R G to see, uh.
Yeah.
On a little cheaper, so it was, it was something that was brought up, did we want to consider purchasing an owl? Wouldn't just be for commissioner meetings, but say department head meetings or other meetings in the courthouse, if somebody needs an owl, then we'd have it, so. It's a minimal, minimal fee. So is it something, maybe, Chris, would you mind checking into, are you guys in favor of that?
Yeah, I'm there.
Yeah, I think up, upgrading to any kind of, um, you know, I T stuff like this is good.
Do we have a tech person, I T person within the county?
No, it's not one on site.
And Angel is moving on. So. She's going to Pembina County. J, J D A. Just received that email. And you're on that board right here, I'm on the J D A board now, so. I'm just saying, I think she's out here I T, is she not? Or helps with that side of it?
Yep.
Once in a while.
She did with all this stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Something I'm not. Haven't utilized.
Ron?
Um, a text from Tanya. Um, could you confirm that they just want to include the four counties that have expressed interest, Trail, Steel, Cal, and Pembina? Samuel's group needs to know who to include to the assessment. Does Steel County participate today, question mark, or Pembina County? I think Linda Pembina's auditor might have been on the Zoom call.
I think notify them all.
Yeah. And it, just to make sure Nelson didn't not get the letter, I would say, let's not, let's make sure we have a no from them, not just a nothing from them, you know? Because I'd hate for them to say we would have been a part of it if he would have talked to us.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, last thing I have on the department head meeting, I guess I had more than a couple things, but, just Karen, this was kind of for you, um, they brought up that, uh, PERS, Ron, you can maybe help me with this, but the PERS, um, re, the retirement system has been fully funded for for all employees, now they're looking at, there must be a bill in legislature that they're looking at, um, only funding it for existing employees and new employees, it would be self-funded. And then they could, it'd be a new retirement system and they could take the retirement with them. Um, not a very good option, um, we feel the fully funded is better, but I don't know if you've heard anything about it, done at legislature or not.
It's probably the biggest thing going on here right now, anybody who's on PERS right now, um, till it changes, is grandfathered in, they will be, it will be fully funded to them. And there's a couple different options that they are looking at, so anybody who's on PERS now has nothing to worry about. They will be, it will be fully funded till the last person is retired.
Comma, but, uh, recruitment and recruitment moving forward, um, the new PERS that this bill passes would be a defined contribution as contrast to it, to defined benefit. So, the, not only would it not help with recruitment, people will be working longer and get less money in their retirement, i- is that a fair assessment?
Um, probably, I, I'm not an expert at it because that's not in my committee and I don't get a chance to go to those committee rooms. Um, they're, they're saying now with the workforce, a lot of people want the money, they don't want retirement. So they're, you know, they're looking at a couple options, and, and we've talked about it too, we hire people and we, we've said, the young people don't want this, they want the money, they want more money and they're not. So. I, like I said, I, I don't have time right now to, you know, study it as good as you guys want me to, because I am busy with my two committees and I'm not trying to shrug that off. Um, we, we hear, you know, different bits and pieces, but, um, that's, that's what I know right now.
That's fine that the young, they're saying the young people want this, but we're not only trying to recruit young people, we have some older people we're trying to recruit. And be able to recruit older people or even look at impairments, this is going to be a detriment to hiring anybody with any experience. The other problem was that the meaning, it sounds like it's going to set up a lot more people to job. And they're going to have job search and you're not going to have any retention issues. To me, there's not a positive side to this from a government aspect.
I don't know why they had to mess with it.
I think that's one of the benefits of government jobs.
I, yeah. I can tell you why they're messing with it is they're going to run out of money to fund it if we keep. Whether, whether you believe it or not, you know, we, there's no, there's no guarantee that we will have oil money for the rest of our lives. So, I mean, this, and this is what it's funding it right now with all the, the oil money. It's, it's too unpredictable, so. You know, they're going to other options and, and I'm, I'm not an expert at those other options because I don't, I've never had, nobody's ever funded my retirement. And I've never had anything to deal with that, so I, I, I really need to, you know, study up on it or, and I, I just don't have the time right now. I'm, I'm there from seven in the morning till five at night and so. That's, that's all I can tell you guys, sorry.
Ron?
In, in my experience, um, retirement, there hasn't always been great pay working for the county. But retirement was the one thing that I could rely on, um, when I retired. I don't know what we sell to do employees i- if this, the retirement isn't there. Not, not only can they go someplace else to earn more money, but, but now we're not guaranteeing them a retirement when they, when they're ready to retire. Uh, it is a concern of mine moving forward as a department head on recruiting people, where recruiting is, is already a problem and, um, in my opinion, it's not going to help recruiting or retention of people.
I, I fully agree with that. I think though if the state does it, we're going to have to figure out creative plans for recruitment and incentives and, you know, for some people having time off or having other days off or et cetera that matter around holidays, et cetera. I mean, you just, you got to figure out what else can.
Yep, I do know that anybody who's retired, or who's hired before that cutoff date, which I think that, and, and that's not even voted on yet. Um, you know, twenty twenty-five, I believe. They will all be in that, in that retirement fund. That they, it'll get, it'll get funded till they, till the last person retires from that day back.
It won't be your job, Ron.
All right, anything else?
I, believe me, I get where you're coming from. And I'm just trying to wrap my head around it all too.
You got a lot of, lot going on over here, Karen.
There's a lot of stuff. And you know, just when you think transportation is easy, well, you know, there's always something that people are arguing about. A crack in the windshield. A crack in the windshield is forty-five minutes of debate. So, and we, and we have eight hundred bills coming up, so.
How many?
I tell you, it goes really fast. So, I had a, I had a bill that was assigned for me to carry on the floor from yesterday and it got put on, on like the eighteenth order. And typically we don't do that many bills. And I saw, I didn't see it because this morning I was in committee early and I got to my desk right before the session started. And it's like, oh, I haven't written that testimony yet or that fore speech, so. I said to the chairman, I said, I don't, I don't think I can do this. Well, I don't know, I guess I can have it on tomorrow's order. Well, I didn't know whether he was going to do it or not, so I wrote it real quick, even though I didn't know what I was writing. Um, and then I didn't have to do it anyway. So it's like, you got to go on the fly, you got to be ready. And yesterday we only did three bills, so you just never know.
Yeah, yeah. All right.
Thank you. Okay, thank you guys.
I don't know, I'll try to figure though.
I think Angel directed this, I think he's still here. She was in here kind of telling her.